Good morning, welcome to regular session Monday, May fifth. We have a full form present, here you certify the meeting was probably posted. Please rise for prayer and pull this.
James Drake?
Lord, these gentlemen in the direction that you would have them go, Father, they'll be in wonderful. Father, we thank you for the blessing that you give us in Walker County. Ask Lord that you watch over us and keep us. Father, the verse of the day that I want to share is from First John, chapter four and verse four. He are God, he are of God, little children, and have overcome them, because greater is he that is in you, than he that is in the world. Thank you for the victory that Jesus exhibited, and thank you for having a relationship with him. Father, we love you and thank you, and lead us and guide us, in Jesus' name we pray.
We didn't get any citizens input on agenda items, consent agenda contains thirteen items.
I don't need to pull anything, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All in favor, raise your hand, motion carries fourteen. Discuss and take action on purchase of Motorola mobile radios, Senate Bill twenty-two funds. Chief Black, I'm.
I won't pay too much, I'm asking you to use Senate Bill twenty-two money, twenty-two money. It's probably going to be a deficit, about ten thousand, I'll take out of my money, see your money, maybe the deficit out of there, or whatever it may be, don't hold it to the tax. Thousand, but I will cover the back end, and ask it for the court approval to use that money.
Sound good, chief.
Are these the ones that the, we talked with the constables, would they use the same ones, or anybody else do you know?
The radio?
Yeah.
You use the same one?
These are radios.
This is a different thing?
Yeah, they're handheld radios.
That's cool, alright, I know we had a conversation, I forgot what they were about, so.
Please will finish out my uniform services. Everyone that's in a uniform will have a newer radio, comes with a map tracking where to find other people, so.
Cool, motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Moving, singing it all, favorite is your hand.
Thank you.
Motion carries fifteen, discuss and take action on D R four, seven, eight, one, project seven, five, three, six, four, seven, O E M funds to be put in O E M project funds.
We got the warrant letter that we have that money coming, and when the money gets here, we have. We can buy additional items that we need during the year.
How much are you getting back, Bush?
Twelve thousand something?
About twelve, thirteen thousand.
Move, catch your motion, Jeff.
That's my motion.
Second.
Moving, sang it all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries sixteen, discuss and take action on transportation and housing and urban development, economic development initiative grant proposal, Ms. Wheeler.
Morning.
Morning.
How are y'all?
Good.
We have been looking at a grant proposal to go up, it's for T H I G, which is transportation and housing urban development, it's an E D I grant, which is Economic Development Initiative Grant. It's a zero percent match for the county, so that's a good thing if we try to decide to go up for it. And so basically, what we are hoping for is that you all will approve that we can submit our application to the grant. It's going to go to Congressman Latrell's office, and I've been working, talking with his aide, there are fifteen allocated spots for his office to move forward, and so far, they have twenty-four applications, so we would be number twenty-five to be submitted. And it's for a Walker County emergency animal shelter and multi-use facility that will be built in precinct four, right behind the way station where an arena is being built. So currently, we don't have anything like that, I'm sure all of you know, we use multiple different facilities in emergency for animals. So we are hoping that this would be a permanent solution for us in the, in disaster involvement, but also, you know, we are a receiving county, so even if Walker County isn't involved, it'd still be a place for people to come and use as an animal shelter, not just for small animals, but livestock. So part of the grant proposal would be the livestock aspect of it, to buy the panels and things that we would need for that too.
Would this be something that, and this may be a brand question, that could tie to the four H stuff and eight, you know?
Absolutely, it's got a, it's got a agri-life component in it, a classroom that will basically double as the animal shelter for teaching, it's got the teaching component in it. Community center, s- small on that side of it, but it, uh, have an event down there, we can have it in that facility.
What's the, what's the deadline on this thing?
So our absolute deadline to turn in our, for Latrell to turn in applications is May twenty-third. So she would, we're going to get with her today after Commissioner's Court to let her know, of course, yes or no, if we're moving forward, and then I have the application prepared, it's here for you, I've attached it. So I already went through that last week and tried to get that perfected to where if we decide to move forward, we're ready to go, we're just waiting on a couple of community support letters that we have to submit with that. I have agri-lives, I have the city of New Waverly, and we have New Waverly I S D, I'm just waiting on the two B stores in Waverly, which I'll follow up with them today. But I wanted to be prepared and ahead of it, in case we decide to get it turned in, we could do that sooner rather than later.
So if it's available in Latrell's office, it might be assumption that it's also available out of Sessions' office?
Correct.
Yeah. So, um, is that something in the next twelve days, or however long that is, that we could find out what?
Submit both?
Submit both?
We can.
So you'd have to declare a location for Sessions north of nineteen?
Yeah. Alright, so holler at me after this, if you would, please, and Christie or whoever, let's talk about whatever, same thing, you know, we take it, we find a spot in both places, and we don't get one, maybe the other shows up, or whatever, it's just other ideas too, so thank you for that.
Sounds good.
I know Christie and Ryan are here. Do y'all want to speak to what we're doing, any?
If there's any questions, we will sure answer anything, I know that the animal shelter side of it, thirty years, we've used many different facilities, and to have a, here's where we're going to put these things all in, call them in place.
And, and I'm under the impression that, that, that agri-life is over the animal sheltering now in emergencies, correct, didn't that, wasn't there a shift somewhere there?
They're the lead agencies for T D M, they have moved them as lead agency instead of Texas Animal Health, so they're the lead agency for the state.
Sound like a motion to somebody.
Motion to approve.
Moved and sang it all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries.
Thank y'all.
Number seventeen, discuss and take action on word of solicitation, C two, three, six, zero, dash, two, five, dash, zero, one, nine, moving right of ways, Walker County Precinct two.
So you got one, huh, Mr. Sheriff?
We got one bid.
One's better than none.
That is true, that is true.
Why, why you think we only got one bid, I mean, we went out for extra time and everything else?
We did, and we, we beat the bushes and contacted other people as well, and we only got one submission. Not quite sure why.
Is this changing your scope of work, Ronnie, I guess?
Not really, I mean, you know, there's no weeding attached, there's no, you know, and, and I'm, you know. If, if I was in the other world and not sitting up in the county, that price would not take back.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that, no, I just, I was curious.
I just curious why we didn't get any more at one bid?
Yeah, well, I, I figured you had it weeding.
No, uh-uh, no, you add that, you won't get nobody. Well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Moving, sang it all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries eighteen, discuss and take action on the issuance of R F Q for geotechnical engineering services for future projects in Walker County.
So I was, it was requested that we go out for a solicitation for geotech, uh, engineering services. Law and, um, G L S, who we have contracts with, do not have a geotech engineer in, in-house, so they would have to go out and solicit these services as well. So, uh, we just kind of sort of, we'll cut the middleman out, and go out for a solicitation. Uh, there are some future projects in paving in Walker County, that we feel that this would be beneficial to have them on board.
So basically, you're, you're asking them to go out?
For solicitation.
Okay.
Yes, or I'll come back with an award.
That's a good approval, second.
Moving, sang it all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries nineteen, discuss and take action on the installation and payment of fire alarms for senior center in Walker County.
Great, so I provided to you, um, two bids that we received, uh, from, uh, resource. Uh, I don't know if I can't see them.
Scroll down.
So the first bid is a, um, security system that notifies, it has, um, smoke detectors, sirens, and alarms. Uh, it does not require permitting, and it does not require, um, CAD drawings of the buildings, uh, to design a fire alarm system. It serves the same purpose, it will have to be monitored though, uh, once it's inspected, and it's thirty-seven hundred.
Who monitors it?
That's true.
Uh, security.
And that's got a monthly bill with associated with it?
It does, it's twenty-eight dollars, um, a month, or if we pay annually, we get a ten percent discount.
Okay.
And the next bid is a full-fledged, uh, fire alarm, um, smoke detector system that, uh, in this amount of twelve thousand, it does not include monitoring, nor does it include the, the CAD drawings of the buildings that would be required, uh, to install that system. So you're looking at just twelve thousand, um, four hundred dollars, and it will do the exact same thing that your security system will do. Just no permitting, I mean, this, this has to be permitted. So I'm bringing it to you guys, for y'all to make a decision on which one you would like. Um, I've talked with Larry, I've talked with, uh, Ms. Law there at the, um, she said she was good with the, um, security system as well. So, but it's ultimately yours decision.
So it, the thirty-eight hundred dollar one says it doesn't include a floor plan, blah, 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 do we have a, like, what do they need for that, is there another cost with that, that goes on top of that?
Uh, yeah, so, um, uh, secure, the resources, uh, security said that they would have to go out and get somebody to do the floor plans, um, for that building, uh, to get the square footage, to know, um, exactly how many. Uh, and where the location of all of your notifications need to be.
Okay.
For a fire alarm system.
Did it give you, did they give us an idea of the price of that, how many, five hundred dollars?
It's around five to six thousand dollars. So add that, add that to your twelve thousand.
So that one, you're probably, by the time I get through, you'd be close to twenty, yeah?
I'm talking about the cheap one, the thirty-seven hundred dollar one.
You don't need anything there.
You don't need anything for that one.
Okay.
Does she, you're okay with either of them, where you at on this?
I think the lesser one will cover what we need, my only question I would have is, is it only for us, or are y'all looking, at one time, y'all are considering, uh, special prosecution, housing, and the veterans office, so that's not really my vote, but I would think that we have a fire unit, want the rest of your building to be notified as well.
This was just for, I was saying.
Don't. Let's be designed by R and E. In Texas. A public client directly.
I, I didn't hear that.
I didn't either.
Sir?
Fire alarm annunciation systems are covered. They're supposed to be by R and E.
But fire alarms, of course.
Yes. This is basically a security system with smoke detection, is what we're.
Yeah, it hooked up to monitor.
Okay.
Um, what was Larry's statement on this?
I don't know if that's what I was.
Larry, is he here?
He's not.
No, he's not here.
So I, I talked to him, and he said that this one, he was good with this one as well.
Alright, assuming that gets us up, uh, where are we at with the city on codes?
You're fine with it, fine with that one.
We need to get something moving, we've been a while without one out there, so.
Too long.
I'll make a motion, we accept the proposal, number one, for thirty-seven, thirty-six dollars and forty-six cents to Resource Security Incorporated.
Second.
And of contingency?
Project contingency, project contingency.
Exactly, and see, but I see ahead.
Moved and seconded it all in favor, say, or raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty, discuss and take action on adding line item number fifteen, Thai B grade four, SAC B aggregate, AKA Thai B grade four, or SAC B aggregate to the ordered contract road interior.
So discussions with Quentin and Ms. Ellen, uh, it was discussed and agreed that instead of adding the line, which was solicited the first time for the award, the second and third time, and with no bid, that we should go back out for a solicitation for this one line.
Okay. Yeah, we don't have any good material of that size, for sure.
Can you agree with that?
No, I'm good with that.
We're gonna, uh, I'll get with you, um, I had a vendor bring me a, a sample, and be sure that we contact them to, a limited response from anybody else.
We, we did.
Yeah, a hundred, so a hundred maybe we need to get.
And I think this will fall into that category, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so make the motion to, I'll prepare for Thai B, Thai B grade four, SAC A aggregate.
I'll second.
Moving, sang it all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-one, discuss and take action on upfittings for P and D's new twenty-twenty-five F one fifty truck through tips contract number two, seven, five, one, zero, in the amount of twenty-three thousand, thirty-seven dollars and eight, four cents.
So it was approved in P and D's budget, uh, to spend seventy-five thousand on a truck and upfitting, and the truck was forty-six, five hundred, we purchased it, and it's been approved. And now we are wanting to, uh, complete that truck with the upfitting, and the total cost of twenty-three oh thirty-seven, added to the forty-six, five hundred, brings the total to sixty-nine thousand, five thirty-seven, eighty-four.
Is this an officer's truck? Okay. That's like, if you was uppinning something that wasn't an officer's truck, that'd be a lot of money.
A lot of money either way, but.
Yeah, I'd be asking a lot more questions about it. My motion to approve.
Moving, sang it all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-two, presentation from Texas Forest Service on a hundred and five thousand dollar reimbursement roads. Yo, good morning.
Morning, Joe.
I, Judge and Commissioners, thank you for the invitation to Congress, Make Sure's Court, to discuss the Good Neighbor Authority, that the Texas Sand Forest Service and the U S Forest Service have been working together on. I know most of you guys might be still handbrake, I'm the Regional Operations Chief for Region Four, this is Jason Ray, Jason's the District Ranger for the San Houston National Forest, if y'all know.
Everybody knows Ben.
Uh, our mission, the Texas, y'all know us pretty well, but our mission for the last hundred and ten years has been to assist private landowners, uh, keep, keep Texas's forests healthy, productive, fresh wildfires, and respond to disasters. So the Good Neighbor Authority was first authorized by Congress in the twenty-fourteen Farm Bill, allowing the U S Forest Service to enter into agreements with state forestry agents, with state forestry agencies to implement incredibly important management work on national forests. When the forest service is unable to do the work alone, to keep our forests healthy and productive. In Texas, the Texas Sand Forest Service and the U S Forest Service have had a G and A, a Good Neighbor Authority agreement in place since twenty-nineteen. We've completed, uh, three timber sales, the U S Forest Service, um, under the Good Neighbor Authority, and we just completed the one here in Walker County, uh, not long ago. Um, the money that we, that we generate from those timber sales is required, um, go to work on U S Forest Service property for stewardship work. But when we, when we began, when we, when we began this agreement with the U S Forest Service, we highlighted that we wanted the money that was generated from these timber sales to benefit, partner with the county and benefit the counties. And so we looked for ways on how it could benefit the counties, and we came to the conclusion that it was the road use agreements, um, that we could, we could use this money for. Um, so we generated about two hundred and thirteen thousand off of the timber sale off seventeen ninety-one, uh, and there's a road use agreement between Walker County and the U S Forest Service, and there's a road use agreement between San Sina County and U S Forest Service, Montgomery County, which, which, you know, a third of the national forests in Montgomery County, they don't have road use agreement, so we've divided that two hundred and thirteen thousand up between San Sina and Walker, so it's about a hundred, a hundred and six thousand, so we've got a hundred and six thousand dollars to give to Walker County. Um, and, and it's pretty simple, all we need, uh, is just an invoice from the county, or material that's used on any of these roads in the road you screened. And it's, it's as simple as that, and then we can pay you based on just that invoice. It just needs, it just needs to have, you know, what the material is, what road it was used on, and when. And this, this agreement, and I think about this agreement, is to go back. Um, the agreement began between us and U S Forest Service on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, so you can go back to July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, and it doesn't expire until June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-eight, so you can go forward as well. I don't think you'll need to, but, uh, we just actually, we have another timber sale we're going to be doing out off of one night. We'll be coming back to you guys on here in a couple of years with, hopefully, some more money we can offer you, so.
Okay, well, one thing I did hear, you said it was on seventeen ninety-one, and it should stay on seventeen ninety-one. So, I appreciate that. What you saying?
I do have one question, is it tied any way to the funds? Look, the reason why I brought that up is the rack funds, the project to work every rack funds, it'd be nice if we funded, uh, some other project other than the rack project, because we have some funds for payment from the rack monies. Right, and the rack doesn't meet, but every couple of years, basically, is what it's been doing, so point is, we don't need to spend this money on the rack, on those projects, even though they're on the schedules.
Okay, I just need to come back with some receipts from last two years.
Yeah, yeah, just, but sure, all we need is receipts for materials, and yeah.
I did like the first email that had two million dollars on it.
Yeah.
I was ready to fit in that money.
That was impressive, that was, that was nice.
Do I got any more questions?
Other than I figure I'm kicked out of the club.
You don't get nothing.
Ben, you want to say anything? Ben, you want to say anything? All right, we're gonna move to twenty three. Discuss and take action on applying for funding reimbursement from Texas Forest Service.
Y'all, before you get out of here, you guys, thank y'all for what you're doing.
Oh, you're very welcome. We're glad that you're down the county.
Yeah.
Make the motion to approve agenda item twenty three, let's present.
But.
Move and segment all in favor, raise your hand. All right, twenty four, discuss and take action on countywide economic development council. Chris Emiliano, Jonathan?
Hey, Chris.
Hey, how y'all doing? This is Jonathan Thomas. Um, we've been out in the public kind of pushing this uh initiative for a while. We're here to discuss the Walker County EDC. And really, today I just want to kind of present, promote and request support for it. Um, I think that we've, everybody here has kind of been privy to some of this information at some point. We've been trying to really get the word out in the community before we, before we really launch. But we're now to a point where we're gonna probably need some money, so that's why. So first, just quick background on it, we're a non-government entity. We're gonna be a um economic development corporation that is gonna be driven and run by, by corporate, by companies, by industry around Walker County. But we're gonna need some for the county, for the city, university and uh TDC, all the cities, Riverside. So we're coming to you guys today to see if you would be one of our founding members, like put some money forward on a one year part to help us get us launched. Um, we are supported by the city, the community. Judge um Christian has been a big part of this. Mayor Humphrey has been a big part of this on just kind of finding out what benefits our um, our corporation, what we need to go forward. Another little talking point, we're not here to compete with any governing entities or the chamber commerce or any industry. Our goal is to create jobs in Walker County. We're gonna try to do it in a private way. It's gonna be very efficient with our funds. We're gonna be a very small shop. We're gonna try to do something that uh me being from industry, I'm gonna try to go out and do stuff that benefits our people in Walker County, try to get some jobs paid, so. Um, and you want to talk about this?
Uh, no, just uh, we appreciate y'all. But no, we just really don't, from a university standpoint, we want to be able to be working with our community as best as possible. And then economic development is the next wave that we want to be able to hitch our wagon to with the city and the county. Um, if there's anything that we can do to support this as terms of grant writing or services, my office and the office of research and sponsor programs, and my boss who's the VP of research and sponsor and strategic partnerships um, has communicated is the support of this effort as well. So if there's anything that we can do to help benefit this um EDC more than attitude.
And one of the reasons we're coming to you now is we have established a set of bylaws, which I will leave with the court. Um, we have, we are in the process of hiring a director. We have a bank account, um, we have an office laid, laid out. So we have, we've done the things it takes to be a formal entity and uh we're ready to launch. And so like I've started out with, we would like to ask the county to be one of our founding members along with the city, Sam Houston and TDCJ and private industry. So private industry is also putting money into this. Um, to the same amount, so um I know that there's probably gonna be a question of how much. We're asking for somewhere between, based on the size of the entity, between fifteen and fifty thousand. We've got commitments from that from some people, so that's our ask and we're just, that's the board to help us out and answer your questions.
I think this is a cheap way to get us to economic development department.
What number you've been involved in, Judge? What number are you thinking of?
So I was gonna do twenty to twenty five and then a budget I was gonna just fill out budget request for after that, so.
Um, yes, we're probably too, we would like to hire an EDC director. In order to hire somebody, we're gonna have to have some money. Um, there is, there is some money that's already been allocated from some of the other members. So we are starting a budget, we're starting to move forward. Uh, in the bylaws, there's some laid out about what the funding will look like going forward. That ask will not be now. But at least it lets you guys see kind of what that lays out. And there's different membership levels of course, there's, there's membership levels for government entities, for private industry, for everything, pseudo government, so.
I know, I think Danny and I met with you a long time ago about this. Did the rest of the members of the court have a chance to meet?
I said all one.
Brandon, have you yet?
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate y'all taking the time. Again, I felt like it was important to, to share with you because everybody's precinct is very different. Walker County is laid out very different and the way that we're gonna, the way we want to grow Walker County needs to appeal, that's why we need you guys. We need y'all's voice. We're gonna, we're gonna be working with developers, we're gonna be working with industry to try to bring them here. And they're gonna affect your, your roads, your bridges, your uh where you're at. So we need your help, not just from a monetary standpoint, from your knowledge standpoint too, so.
And here y'all got any kind of budget or anything you can give us at this point to kind of?
So starting out, like I say, we've got about, we want to try to get raised about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for year one. And then let the director establish the budget going forward and let that budget, it's gonna be, like I say, it's gonna be a pretty co- cost effective EDC. Uh, we're thinking two employees, one small office, and then mainly just getting out there in front of the there's a lot of labels coming to you guys' office on, hey, we want to come to Walker County. Half of those things are probably, uh, that's not one. But we would like to start building those, helping and asking the questions to see if there is a way some of those companies can come. Or if there's reasons we can say yes or no, or meet together. We want to have a place local where we can meet. Whether it's a question for planning and developments office, whether it's a question for intergy, they're all gonna be on this board and we'll be able to sit down and make a decision based on what, what we can do and whether they're a good fit for Walker County.
Yeah, are you gonna have like a member of the court and a city council and all that on the board? I can't remember everything.
Yeah, for sure. And the bylaws, again, I'm, I'm gonna here, everybody here wants to do that, so uh, but they're lays out kind of who we think is prospective members. And they represent the county, the city, the university, but also all of our um utilities. So it's gonna represent what the city is, what the county is. We want it to, to represent our body. We want, I mean, our board's gonna be sitting down and listening to everybody that comes in. So y'all will hear, there will be no, this will be a representation of this court as well.
And we've met with all those people prior to all this too. They've all sat down in the room, we sat down with all the electrical companies, the gas companies and explained all that to them too, so. And developers and landowners.
Ronnie, you mentioned something too. You said it was a long time ago.
It was to me, I'm older than.
It's because it's been kind of a designed slow roll. We don't want to do something that launch something we're not ready for.
Yeah.
So we did, we talked to you guys first, then we went to the city, talked to them. We tried to lay out a really good plan. We hired um a former EDC director from Conroe, um, who's actually taken a position that's gonna help us. She was on, we paid her, so she's been paid out of, you know, out of the EDC's pockets. Um, and now we're ready to take that next step, but it's been slow and it has taken a while. I've heard people like, oh, we've been here and that's, that's for four months. Yeah, I mean, I don't want it to be something that we just start up and there's not enough support, it fails. If we didn't get the support up till now, I would never come here and ask you all for this. So I think we've got really good support throughout the camp.
So, so Chris, I, I know this is the first time, it's not the first time we've heard it, but it is the first time for some of the other uh agencies inside the, the county. Being uh, uh Quentin and them, and I'm sure Ms. Patricia's got questions about how this is all gonna be moved around and panned out of. I, I would like to be able to ask him uh if they've got any questions at this point.
Don't know enough yet at this point to even ask the question.
Right.
So, it, you know, I, I don't know, just giving, you know, I, I don't know what the judge's intent is. I mean, um, it's just, I'm assuming we've got to have some kind of contract. We're gonna have to look over the bylaws.
Right, absolutely.
And, and make sure all that stuff is done, uh, but.
Yeah, and, and with us, if we put money in it, then that's maybe, we, we have to be able to see the financials and all that.
Yeah, we, we'd come back and work a full agreement like we do with Safe House Boys and Girls Club, any other entity. We, they turn over the books to us to request the money. Everything's the same down the road. We just need to see where everybody's at on it.
Well, the reason I ask is it sounded like you were wanting something right now.
No, and I don't really, I mean, that's, that's y'all's decision on how you vote on it. I really wanted to make this official as, I mean, like I have talked to you all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the side, but I'd like for this to be on the record that we are watching and we'd like.
We just don't want to write agreements and have Quentin review contracts and bylaws and y'all come up here and say no, so. If y'all are all in agreement, then.
Uh, I don't have a problem with looking at it and moving forward at all, but I would like to see the bylaws and all that, so.
I have a copy. Yeah.
Play this for whoever.
Y'all are in agreement, then we'll start to work on an agreement and get everybody's copies into.
Yep.
Thanks, Chris.
Yep.
And I forgot your name already, what was?
So Jonathan also does polytechnics. So when we talk about, when we bring jobs in and all that to our workforce solution, they'll be able to set up a degree program and certificates for a company to come into the county and say, we need these pers- specific uh certificates. They'll be able to take those certificates, train them, and then develop that into coursework for a degree plan to move them on into higher education. So we can take somebody at mid-level or lower level degrees and advance them in the workforce and get them some higher paying jobs here.
You know, Chris, it's even a miracle I remembered meeting with you.
We can just talk about this.
Yeah, that was the other things we talked about, probably the.
I do appreciate it.
Yeah, so we're gonna pass them and then I'll bring back an agreement and all the information.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Twenty five. Discussing, discuss delinquent tax fine and fee collection report presented by Leslie of Purdue, Brandon Fielder, Collins and Mont. Good morning.
Can you help me with a small question? How do you pronounce your last name?
Like S C O T T Y. I know, it's, it's a deceptive amount.
I've been wanting to ask you that for a while.
Yeah, that's totally fine. Um, I, I'd rather people ask. I married into it. I'm not sensitive about the pronunciation of the capital, not in any way. My maiden name was short.
The spelling of it doesn't sound anything like that.
It does, too many consonants. My, my husband's ancestor was Windish. Um, and he made that up to hide out from the Confederates.
Really?
Yes, yes, true story, I'm told.
We've got some history this morning.
Yeah, it's quite fascinating. It's how we this morning with a delinquent tax collection report, and I have with me this morning super boner associate with a new associate with our office, the second one on the job. Um, and he is killing it. He's doing a really great job. We're actually gonna be back here for court tomorrow. And I'm gonna let him take the lead and sit back and relax and, and watch him do his thing.
Looking forward to it.
And Tiger, Tiger works as well.
Everybody knows Tiger.
Tiger, yes, the, the, the infamous Tiger. I just wish I had a cool name like that. It's way better than Scotty.
Blame my dad a little bit.
There you go. Well, he sent you up. It's a great name. Anyhow, as we go through the report, these are the delinquent taxes only. These are, this is twenty twenty three tax year, so keep in mind the appraisal district is collecting the currents. They're collecting around ninety five percent every year and they're turning over to me uh, around five, six percent every July. So taxes go delinquent February first. They get the taxpayers, if they are still delinquent in May, they get what's called a thirty three oh seven notice. And that's mailed from the appraisal district. And that warns the taxpayers, it's, it's our due process procedure that the collection penalty will attach on July one if the taxes are still delinquent come July one. The collection penalty is fifteen percent penalty, and that is the collection of the penalty that's passed on to the taxpayer is how we get paid. So we're at no cost to the county. Um, we only get paid if we collect the money, so it's very incentivizing process. So I like to preface the collection report as we start that the appraisal districts collecting around ninety five percent. This is just what gets turned over to us on a yearly basis. So the first chart we have is the account breakdown chart, and this gives me a, a snapshot of the entire delinquent role through twenty twenty three as it is categorized. You'll notice the largest section is the action pending section at thirty percent. Those are taxpayers that we are trying to contact. We're trying to reach them by phone. We're trying to reach them by letter. We're doing title work research to see if there's a lien holder on the property, so we can contact them as well. Uh, many of these taxpayers are actually in, in payment agreements around this time of year and we're monitoring those monthly and letting those pay those out. Um, the next largest section we have is, actually, I skipped the deferral section. That was the largest section. I apologize. The deferral section at thirty one percent, just one percent higher than the action pending. Those taxed deferred accounts are your taxpayers that are sixty five or older or have a disability and they've elected to defer payment of their taxes on their residence homestead. So they can only have one residence homestead at a time. Um, they have to get the homestead exemption with the appraisal district. And then they have to file an affidavit applying for this deferment. So they, they have to prove that they live there, they have to prove ownership to prove their entitlement to the deferment. And then once that deferment is in place, we cannot actively collect on those accounts. However, those taxpayers can opt to make payments while they're in that deferment status. So sorry, I skipped ahead on the action pending. Um, now, third on the chart is the litigation section at twenty seven percent. So that's when our phone calls, our letters contacting the lien holder. If those fail or the taxpayer set up a payment agreement and didn't make any payments or defaulted their payment agreement, sometimes it's necessary for us to proceed to litigation. So this is everything in the litigation process from suit just filed yesterday to ready for the next tax sale. I'm gonna move along to the dollar range chart. Next chart, um, our system puts together taxpayers that, uh, accounts that are owned by, by the same taxpayer. So when I refer to an account and in this chart, it could be that one taxpayer owns multiple accounts. And we do this for efficiency purposes. So when we make our phone calls, we can talk, discuss all of the taxpayers' accounts at one time. Or if we need to file a lawsuit, we can cover all the taxpayers' accounts at one time for judicial efficiency. Um, note that the ten thousand and up category, which is only eight percent, um, the vast majority of those taxpayers are in the tax deferments. Um, two of them are in litigation and one of them has a commitment to pay. But the bulk of your taxpayers uh in the county are in the twenty five hundred, two thousand dollar, dollar range. Third chart is your tax year chart. Largest percentage of delinquency for the twenty twenty three tax year, that was turned over to us last July for collections. It's around thirty percent of your delinquent role. So when we're still working actively to collect, we'll start twenty twenty four on July one. Um, so many of these, if they're not in a payment agreement, are working their way into the litigation process. Sixteen and prior, many of those are your over sixty five or disability tax deferrals. Those remain on the account until the taxpayer is no longer eligible for the referral or that property as their residence homestead. Um, there are some accounts with mapping or title issues who work year round with the appraisal district to, to correct those accounts or whatever, whatever tweak is, is necessary to be made missing link to the appraisal district so that we can continue with collection on those. Then I have some historical collection data for the taxes for twenty twenty through twenty twenty three. You'll see for the twenty twenty tax year, we're at seventy six percent collected of what was initially turned over to us. And I'm gonna skip to twenty twenty three. You'll see we are almost fifty four percent collected of what we officially turned over to us for that tax year last July. So keep in mind, thirty one percent of your role is inactive deferral. So that, that reflects in, in what we can do on this historical data as well, since we can't actively collect on those accounts. Um, we're doing almost monthly tax dockets in, in both district courts. We kind of flip flop district courts. Um, twelfth and, and two seventy eighth every other month. So we're, we're coming to court roughly once a month and we're having three to four tax sales per year. Last tax sale being in February and next one in July. If you're interested, you can visit our website, pbfcm.com. And now I'm gonna switch gears to fine and fee collections. We represent your Ford Justice of the Peace Courts for collection of fines and fees. And it works out much like the delinquent tax system. The Texas Code of Criminal Procedure allows us to add a thirty percent penalty when those are turned over to us. And that, that fee is passed along to the defendant and it's through collection that we get paid that thirty percent. So our main goal is to get the defendant's attention, drive them to the court for resolution. And I provided you a chart showing um some statistics, um, the amounts that were initially turned over to us, percentages that we've collected. We've resolved about twenty five percent. Um, if you average the totals for each JP court and collections of actual money, the courts have um cleared about ten percent on average by dismissal or, or um or clearing the case. So about thirty five percent have been resolved by either dismissal or payment. And I have some, some charges. Oh, all four courts participated in the um case resolution program this year. That means we mail uh that if it's a colorful postcard, and if the court does warrants, that notifies them that there could be a warrant. Um, so then again, our, our goal is to get them to contact the court and resolve the matter. The main goal with those postcards. For the next three maps I have attached, just to give you an idea of. First one is the top ten accounts by zip code. The top ten sixty accounts are in the seven, seven, three, fifty-eight zip code. Then we have the top ten bad address accounts by zip code. These are ones where mailings are coming back to us. So we're trying to find and correct the address for those defendants. And I actually, I forgot to mention, we started texting in February this year. So we now have the ability to text the defendants as well. So you'll see on that, that initial fine and fee chart that gave you the statistics, how many phone calls, letters we've sent. We've had seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight text contacts so far. So trying to leave no stone uncovered and try to get their attention and let them know, drive them to the court. So top ten bad address. And then the final one, which is my favorite, is really fascinating. It shows a nationwide map where we've found these folks that have come through your county, got some kind of violation and where they have gone since. So I find that one really fascinating.
Says all accounts for JP four. Is that not all the JPs?
It's all, this one is just four.
Just precinct.
So that one's on the, is that one on the freeway? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's the weigh station.
So they're getting the most. That's your place. Yeah. Do y'all have any questions? It's fascinating to see. Big concentration of them over on the, on the east side, surprisingly.
I don't know y'all keep up with all that, but I thank you for doing it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, y'all do a great job for us. We appreciate what y'all do, Wes.
Thank you very much. And feel free to reach out anytime, available anytime. Have questions or need anything.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scotty.
Twenty-six, discuss and take action on authorization of profit twenty twenty-five unclaimed property capital credits from Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts. That's my motion. Moving seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion case. Twenty-seven, discuss and take action on hiring a part-time employee for precinct three. Summer mowing from June first through October thirty-first at the salary of sixteen dollars an hour to be paid from budgeted funds.
We did this last year. It worked out super well for us. I'd like to do it again. My motion to approve agenda item twenty-seven.
Moving seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion case. Twenty-eight, discuss and take action to purchase Ford F four fifty chassis from ESD number two, road bridge from road and bridge four funds and the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Moving seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion case. Twenty-nine, discuss and take action on civil actions related to former EMS employees. That'll go executive session. Five, five, one, oh, what? Seven, one. Time is nine forty-six. Time is ten oh two. We're back from executive session. No action taken on number twenty-nine. Go on planning development, number thirty. Public hearing concerning amendments to the Walker County subdivision regulations under chapter two thirty-two of Texas government code. Time is ten oh two. Anyone here wants to speak? All right, now these.
Well, I did have one call, you know, while I was sitting there, Mr. Byas called and expressed his concerns. And a couple of y'all walked in while I was talking to him. Anyway.
Let me short public hearing.
So we're going to go over some of this? Like, I don't want to go over any of that.
We'll have to go over it in thirty-one. Thirty, yeah, thirty-one.
Any developers there in the room want to talk? All right. We're going to go into number thirty-one. Public hearing is closed at ten, three.
All right, Stephanie.
Thirty-one, discuss, take action on order twenty twenty-five dash five four to men Walker County subdivision regulations under chapter two thirty-two of Texas government code.
Stephanie, how? Stephanie, how good of our concrete standards.
Well, this one. So we're increasing the PSI from thirty five hundred to four thousand PSI for your concrete, we're reducing the spacing on some, well, we're changing some of the steel requirements in the concrete, so this will improve them. These changes.
Fifty year concrete loads?
Hopefully, hopefully, so every pavement section is going to need to be ultimately designed by a geotechnical or an engineer. Um, for every development, we just list the minimum standard, so if you have a development that's going to have, um, like increased truck traffic, something like that, then the standard is going to exceed what our minimum standard is in the current regulations or any those right now.
Yeah.
But it's for asphalt and concrete.
True, yes.
Okay, cuz that was one of the big concerns, we have some of the roads failing and I understand where you're coming from completely.
Yeah.
My big thing was we need to upgrade what's underneath the asphalt too, not.
Everything.
Yeah, and it keeps referring back to text dot twenty twenty four versus twenty fourteen. I don't, I didn't read twenty fourteen, get lost in that book, um, so from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty four, have we gotten bigger? Have we, has, has, is there improvements as far as what we're putting underneath it?
So there are, there's clarifications as to, um, for example, the recycle base. Text on has clarified their second base material requirements, so that's an improvement, but we've eliminated that, that option even from the regulations. So that's not really an option, um, I'm sure there's other improvements, I just don't know.
So, and I think I give all you guys this, this was a road that I engineered, but they did the geotech on, uh, uh, one of my roads, and one of our subdivisions was built, and, and I go, keep going back to this, asprey, asphalt, concrete pavement options. And it goes in here and you have to decide which level you want, right? Two hundred thousand easels, two fifty, four hundred, our biggest subdivisions was built at two fifty. Um, I've made a decision for precinct, we'll, we'll build another thing out, but four hundred, so is that addressed in our changes that we've made?
Not directly, but it is addressed, um, because we ultimately have to design some traffic load, so I think the subdivision you're talking about, I don't know if that was actually designed for the actual traffic load that's on those streets because the, the section, the pavement section, say two hundred fifty thousand, um, easels, then you are looking at probably about two thousand vehicle trips per day. And so if you've got a very large subdivision, they may be seeing a lot more. Hey, that might be the issue, and so now the current standard, so that was designed under the two thousand, current standard, um, requires that the geotechnical provide a design that's gonna give you a twenty year life, so based on the actual traffic load.
Well, part of the problem that I'm seeing that in our big subdivision is that we didn't really account for the five to six hundred loads per pad. Because the ground, the way the ground is, so all we have is dump truck after dump truck after dump truck.
And that needs to be addressed in that figure there.
Yeah.
Yes, whenever it's built out, the load's gonna be household and garbage trucks, I get that, but the building process is what we gotta get through.
Yeah, the building process is, is gonna be the key to get through that, and, and a lot of it is the landscape, how your landscape is is terrible out there in certain areas, you know, where you've got a thousand loads of dirt all into one pad, but.
So how do we address that in our policy?
We can.
Who makes that call besides the developer?
Well, it's their engineering team that would make the ultimate on what the design of pavement should look like. We only have the minimum standard, and so they need to relay, and we can add build this into the regulation, but they need to relay to whoever's designing that pavement section, that it needs to account for those first few years of development where you do see, um, increased traffic load, increased weights on your, um, pavement. The lar- large trucks, dump trucks, things like that.
I mean, to you, to your point, we have minimums, so you could assume heavier loading, trucks down under our minimum and raise the minimum standard, increase the amount of base, increase thickness of pavement as a minimum, you could set the minimum higher, but if, once you proceed past minimum, then it becomes a design, it becomes a design by the developers P E that's submitted based on, but their T I A, their trip estimation, all that kind of stuff. I understand it, but from our sitting up here, I wanna make that minimum either better or when the P E, not the developers P E, when our engineer looks at it, we take that into consideration. You know, um, just cuz it's a thousand drips per day, like Ronnie said, we're, we're gonna build whatever homes, you got nine hundred truckloads of dirt coming in to build that home. That's our problem, that's, that's.
It, it's not gonna be the car traffic that's gonna kill us, it's the, the heavy truck traffic up front, is what's the main issue I've seen.
You can increase your depth of stabilization, you can increase the thickness of your base, you can increase the things of your asphalt, they all, how you do that, it kind of varies, so you may, um, for one example, if you were to step up to like four thousand easels, um, this is, this is a specific, a project specific requirement, but it stepped up from two inches of asphalt, eight inches of base, six inches stabilized, to two inches of asphalt, six inches of base, and ten inches of stabilized subgrade. So it increased the stabilized subgrade to carry additional load, you could reduce your base material.
It's kind of all depending too, everything needs to increase.
Understood, um, so, so there's, there's options to it, so increasing your asphalt thickness, a lot of entities, especially for your your arterial and higher, um, or sorry, for your collector and hire, you may see like two and a half inches of asphalt versus two inches of asphalt. Um, I think the two thousand regulations only require one and a half inches of asphalt, um, and six inches of base and six inches stabilized. So, so what we have now is, is increased from that minimum two thousand standard.
Yeah, I mean, it, it don't matter how much asphalt you put, if the underneath don't hold, I mean, it's it fail, you know, so increasing the asphalt's not really where we need to be, I mean, it's just starting to breathe, I mean, but you know, if we got concrete, then it, it's weight bearing.
But if we don't put this in.
You know, so.
Our policy now.
Yeah.
If we don't put this in our policy, then it's gonna be an argument between engineer versus engineer.
Yes, I, I agree, I don't, I don't, we gotta have it very specific where they understand what it is, he done stood up twice.
I gotta say something.
Go ahead.
One of the things that, that.
Hey, Don, Don, state your name for care. Okay, just making sure.
Right, I can iterate this more or not. Anyway, what, what the issue is, I work with engineers, and outside of Walker County is where ninety percent of our work occurs. What, what we're trying to do is replacing a design standard as a regulation, and that's all fine and good. But minimum standards and, and placing this type of authority on county, uh, goes back to errors and omissions of what we're making people do. In a nutshell, in all of the locations outside of Walker County, when we get finished with a project, there's a certificate of, uh, compliance that our engineers will have to sign off on. And they're the ones who come in with the testing, they're the ones who are gonna come and take a look at that subgrade, and they're gonna say, from those geotechnical reports, they're gonna say, for instance, ballpark up here, everybody knows it's flexible land, standard is forty two inches removed, replace it with a low P I under a fifteen to eighteen P I, and then it's up to the contractor to notify us, and we will come out there and check that depth, we will check that compression, we're gonna look at the, is it ninety four percent product, or is it ninety four percent modified, has the, has the P S I worked out, there, is there an underground stream underneath there, those are all elements that go in there, so I think that the easiest thing to do to correct this situation is place it back onto the engineer, he's the one that's ultimately responsible. But you're removing his responsibility when you're coming up with this, you're limiting his responsibility. So you need to turn it back over there to the engineer and say, look, Mr. Contractor, we need this, this, and this, and the engineer of record is gonna be required to provide that geotechnical information, independent testing, to come in, and they're not gonna spot check it. I've gone around here in Walker County before, and I've seen a report that says it's compliant, and then my guys took out five tree roots out of a pad. The test point at the contractor's tested right there. That's wrong. That's wrong, cuz he knows it's gonna pass right there, ten feet away, it's not gonna pass. Fifty feet away, that station zero plus two hundred, it's not gonna pass, those are all things that you would normally do in standard, standard procedures, it is covered under the occupations, um, code, which talks about engineering practice act, same thing with architecture. When you go through there, he's got that, he's got that responsibility, one of the concerns that I voiced to Andy, I voiced to Bill and other people, we're reluctant to provide any type of engineering services around here, cuz we don't get the final say. They get finished with it, they turn to their document, I've got one right, right now, did we not fill? Right now, we're not signing off on it, wasn't done right. They did the drawings, we had the engineers, all the backup there, the customer's going, your guys need to sign on. No, we don't, wasn't done right. That's the way it works, that's all I got.
That's the way it's supposed to work, Don, but if it works that way, I, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but it does not always work that way.
But just for the court's.
That, and that's the problem.
Current process, like, you have a minimum, we do have a minimum technical specification, in other words, you can't go below this, but we do require the engineer to do the design to whatever level is necessary for them to be able to stamp it, it's gonna function in association with criteria, and we are requiring that the engineer, the developer's engineer, the private sector engineer certify that everything was constructed in accordance with their plans prior to coming back to so they, if they don't get that, and we have a case where that's, they're having a hard time getting that, then the court has been very likely in the past to approve anything without the engineer sign on on these subdivision files. Uh, there's one that, that's been back to court a couple of times, struggling in getting that final certification or hasn't approved yet.
I mean, normally that'd be like a blile associates function, they would take a.
Some of those letters, certification letters will get back. Stuff ain't done on them.
Correct.
Yeah, no, we've had that come up, where we get a certification and go out and it, the thing that they're certifying is.
Yeah, and, and.
With the certificate, there's occupancy for a building, but there's cer- uh, certificate of compliance, and that because there is no vertical, there's no inspection authority in Texas legislation. We've talked about that on the phones, it's a vertical, doesn't mean that you can't require the engineer to provide by law what he is supposed to provide by law. That's covers, that's covered under his spot patients, he has.
I must wonder, could you, as part of your design for new construction, could you make them consider what you just talked about, the a thousand dump truck loads, you know, when you, when you're, when you're laying out your subdivision and you're gonna build it, if you're gonna start at the front, cuz it's easier to go to the back, do you, do you, I don't know how you get it in there, but you have to say, you know, you know you're gonna have your, your dirt and then your concrete and then your wood, and you're, you're gonna have five hundred dump truck loads or five hundred fifty thousand pound, eighty thousand pound trucks coming to every single house that gets built through there, so they have to account for that somehow, I don't know how you do that, but it's actually, they draw it, like I say, for the two Toyotas that are gonna park and drive away, and that's fine, but that's not who goes in there for the.
Yeah, I mean, if you can get through construction.
Yeah.
I mean, you're pretty, pretty good shape.
Yeah, the building, one subdivision that's in my neighborhood right now that's working gets the very, 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 very back, and they're driving through the entire thing to get there, you know, so the big beautiful roads that, that are holding up, the Toyotas and the pickup trucks. And getting ready to get whooped up by that right there, so, um, I don't know if, I don't know how you write that in there, you have, you gotta put the, you have to account for the super heavy loads at the beginning, if you, if you're going to keep running over your roads while you build the next section.
Which, and, and that's the typical thing that is done, they build the first section to work in.
Yeah.
Well, that's why you, that's, that's why you get some of these counties taking into consideration that they won't take them till X is built out.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I don't know that that's not the only way around it, I mean.
Is Grimes County like still doing that, Andy, or do you know?
Um, I don't, I don't, I haven't reviewed their, I'm not sure, I, there, there was a county that, that I was told by the developer, they delayed acceptance of the roads to the boat lanes until there was a certain percentage of lots that were built out. I think that's the problem they were trying to overcome is, let's not, not, probably a lot of developers are in love with that idea, that they, uh, maintain the roads.
But they, but they don't seem to have a problem going over the road.
Let you know what.
All the other trucks.
But, but, no, that is, I think, what their, what their approach is, we won't take it until, uh, until you get to this subdivision, that being said, I mean, I think the court realizes this, but to get to seventy or eighty percent built out on on these, on the straight land subdivisions, the, the, the owner builder subdivisions grow a lot faster, but the straight land sales subdivisions, maybe like that decades to get the subdivision out, yeah, we've got lots still being built on an open slate right now, and that.
Yeah, and have for twenty, thirty years, all my life, just, you know.
Just FYI, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I don't think that's very feasible anyhow, is, I mean, it's, it sounds good from our side, but.
Outside of that, improving the stand, the minimum standard to a higher, so higher traffic loads, higher weights uh, would be the only other solution that we can go, uh, that I can think of, maybe another one that I have.
Yeah, and, and, and that's our problem in that new subdivision out there is all the truck traffic.
And, and honestly, that subdivision spans so many different versions of the code, it's like.
Yeah, it started with the leased nuts back up. But I mean, it's still not stopping, and they met it, you know, they met every responsibility they're supposed to meet above and beyond, and we're still having failures because of all the truck traffic that's out there, but you think, some of the paths probably got a thousand loads of dirt in them.
Right, uh, there's some, there's some.
You seen them out there.
There's some sizable.
Yeah.
So we can include some generic language that indicates that the engineer shall design the pavement for the construction phase of the project, and, and, you know, again, you know, push that, put, put that, that, that responsibility should be on the people designing the pavement, um, so just to put that in regulation may help.
But then, but in result, these land subdivisions, like I say, we, we lobby decades out before they're finished.
There are some subdivisions that, that I work in that will only allow six yards max on a dump truck or a concrete truck. Regardless.
See, that would, that would have to come like private, because the county can't do that.
Yeah, I don't know how you down it to over, over you take it above, but we, I mean, we're bound to, it's a public road.
I think we got, I think we got more work on this, you know, I don't, I don't know if we can, I don't, I don't know that we're done with it today, even if we do something today, I don't know that we're done with it today.
Oh, we'll never be done with it.
Yeah, we, we need to do something to move forward, though, I mean, you know, we put this off a little while, I'm ready, but.
Yeah.
Now, well, uh, I did get my concrete section and everything, and I've seen all that, increasing it to four thousand, having the either or, but, uh, you know, I'm, I'm okay with that, we still gotta get the bottom of it better.
On both options.
Like I said, it's never gonna be over with, you know, it's, um, you build it, you set a standard, a minimum standard, not a standard, but a minimum standard. Nine times out of ten is what they're gonna do, you know, and, uh, if we don't keep up in our standards, then you get what you get, and what we get is not worth it, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, and.
I, I, I remember I, I went out on one of Bill's deals here, been a year or so ago, um, and I was visiting with a contractor, and the road was absolutely falling apart, and they were selling the homes faster than they could build it, you know, and that is a problem.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and the people were still buying it.
And they tell us twenty years of the road, and what might last fourteen months.
Yeah, and amazing.
Year, and they're gone, like.
And it's yours then.
Half more years out of it.
Yeah, yeah, and then that engineer stamped off on it, so is he gonna pay for that, Don, or what?
No, you know they ain't.
I said if the, after he gets out of the warranty period and the engineer stamped off on twenty year roads, he gonna pay to fix it?
Have to check with his insurance.
That's what I figured you'd tell me.
Yeah, you're being long, it's an even little bit, no.
Check with his insurance, I, thanks for the answer, I appreciate it.
And everything changes, right?
I knew you'd tell me something like that.
We, we built a bridge, uh, before I was ever associated with it, and we built a bridge for the county, and I don't go to a bridge cemetery. It's got beams under, probably five foot tall, no problem, they started running these, what we call them super dumper's, where there's the dump truck with ten axles under it, text I come out, reengineered that, or re-inspected that bridge, and now it has a weight limit on it for that specific purpose because things have changed, right?
You not have geriatric engineering on your bridge.
Jerry was very well in, in, involved in that, the point of that, the point of saying that is, is this has to be a living document.
Jerry was very well in, involved in that. The point of that, the point of saying that is, is this has to be a living document. It has to change, the times change.
It's time to change.
Question, if your minimum standard is concrete and asphalt, and I select the concrete. Is concrete an acceptable solution for a high plasticity soil?
Generally not.
It's going to be your job to tell me that, you're the engineer.
Well, standard sense, concrete, six inches thick, with, uh, rebar, sixteen inches on the center.
Minimum standard.
I meant, I meant the minimum standard.
But you said, you told me a while ago, Don, that you're going to design this thing for the soil. So I don't want you to be on the minimum side or nothing. As an engineer, you're supposed to be above it.
Your document doesn't say that, that's the problem.
But you told me that a while ago, Don. I was listening.
Design as a twenty three, twenty year road line by a PE and the minimum standard, so it's both. It's not just if you do minimum standard, you don't have to design it. You have to do both. It's, it's not either or, it's both. It has to meet the minimum standards, so if you, if your design is less than, then you have to bring it up too, but it, that doesn't mean, that doesn't relieve you from liability of designing more than if that's what's necessary to, to, to build a road that meets the criteria.
If you know that the dump trucks are going to be coming in with the super loads or whatever, then that road, that information should be shared upfront. We're talking like subdivision, normally we'll do a nice entrance, stall for section one. And then section two, then section three. So when you, when you set this up, that load zone can be established. I mean, your, your standard load would be like a forty thousand dollar, a forty thousand pound load, that would be a standard traffic or whatever. Okay, that's a standard thing that you could do. But in some instances, you would need, uh, to design for that textile, uh, certification of that truck. If they're going to go in there with trucks that are above the average. Then they would need to design for that, or those trucks would not be allowed to go in there.
Therefore, again, it's a public road and it has to be built to the eighty thousand pound standard. So anything, anything over the eighty thousand has to be run through textile.
Right.
And but anything under that is, is higher.
Right, so it goes from a collector to an arterial. Or something else, a definition on the front end, if he's ever bringing in eighteen wheelers with these super dumps and stuff like that. That's not a standard deal. It's not, it's not your regular dump truck with Willie Bell coming over twelve yards. So that's just the way they kind of get it. So that would be the thing upfront, that if they're going to develop this out, this is going to be your phase one or whatever. That road should be that standard for that development to go further. They know they're going in there. They're going to buy in larger quantities, you know. That's true. At the same time, it's costing a great. And the engineers can say the same thing. You allow dump trucks to go in here, that the road is never designed for a collector, all used as an arterial.
So the consensus of the court is we need to build it better.
A lot better, and, and.
That means we need to raise our money.
Yeah.
Which I think we've accomplished with the new, new textile standards.
Likely, I haven't compared it side by side to twenty fourteen, so I can't say, certainly, but definitely textile would not have changed their standard to something that provides.
What about coming?
Substandard.
But are we gonna, are we, are, are we going to instruct Andy's office to, hey, taking consideration of loads? Are we going to take in, uh, what, what they're going to build? Do we, if we stick to just a trip analysis, the trip proposal, whatever. We're going to get minimum built to what we have in our policy. If we don't up our policy, our requirements in our policy, we're going to get built at the minimum. Because as one comment, the two Nissans, the two Toyotas that go through there are going to be fine. If we don't somehow take into consideration what's going to build out in there. Then we're just spinning our wheels. We're not going to do any, we're not going to accomplish anything.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's no possible way we're going to come to a solution today. Can we just do a workshop next court on this? Where we can not hold in all these other people up?
Yeah.
As we can, right now, our minimum stabilization is six inches. Uh, and we see a lot of subgrade failure. I've, I've seen a lot of subgrade failure when I've been out in the field. And so, um, maybe we increase that to eight inches minimum and that's going to give you, you know.
Can't each of you sounds better?
If you go to the ten, that gets you on the E cell chart pretty high.
We're going to have to do something, but yeah, uh, like Sam, maybe you can go back for our workshop on the next court if that's a possibility.
Does the court want to take action on this before the court today?
Have you got other things other than the road standards in there? Yeah.
Concrete standard in, but it just adds it, it doesn't replace anything. I want to look at taking action on what's in the actual policy today, because this is a posted meeting.
Yes.
That proposing requirements, all that. The workshop is a workshop, so. I don't necessarily have to be a poster part of that, as long as I take.
Yeah, that's fine, Andy, if you want to do that. But look at all the rest of it.
But can we ask, how, how long is it going to take? I don't want to do an hour with these folks. I would like to do that.
It's up to you guys.
I'd like to pause, Andy, let's take care of everybody else getting out of here.
That sounds good.
They don't need to sit through all this.
We're going to break from thirty one for a minute and come back to it. Thirty two, discuss, take action on approval of construction examination guidelines. Are you going to pass on that one too? Thirty three, discuss and take action on top diamond investment group LLC request for twelve month extension for development onsite wastewater.
They've been before the commissioner's court, their original application did, was put in several years ago. You coming back first, looking for extensions on the permit. Uh, court has granted, I think, three extensions to this point. They're asking for another twelve month extension for a manufactured housing community.
Am I here?
Thought this was RV.
It is RV.
I'm sorry, it is, it's our.
Anybody here for that?
The point I'm going to make on this one is, is I think this is the one on Julia Justiceville.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the only one that wanted to do it right. The only RV park that was willing to do what we asked them.
Right.
So unless they're willing to change that, I'm fine with giving them an extension. You know.
Yeah, I got a motion.
I'll make that motion too. Yeah, I make the motion to, to approve it next.
I'll give you a second.
Moving second on favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty four, discuss and take action on Ms. Morales' request for variance on onsite surface facility regulations. What kind of regarding permanent application twenty twenty five dash zero zero nine two?
Yeah, we'll get to you pretty soon, I guarantee.
Uh, the request, uh, is that there's an existing onsite wastewater system on the property. There isn't a claim included that it was installed prior to the grandfather date. Nineteen eighty, it's a two acre track. The appraisal district records that we can find show, uh, two thousand and four, uh, is the placement date. There is a letter from a, from a sanitary, where they've looked at setbacks. But, you know, as I've said before, we're responsible to TCU for this permitting, where the county access author. Uh, typically that what that means is that we can, we can go beyond the TCU, TCU rules and in the way that we permit, we can have increased regulation, and we do in some cases in our local policy. But there's, uh, waiving of a permit altogether gets sort of deep into the gray area of, of, of that, of the extent of our jurisdiction. Uh, variances is different than waiving permit requirements altogether. So I, I don't have, again, backup going, it's all prior to the grandfather day. I don't even have a claim that it was installed prior to the grandfather day. All I've got right now is, um, the sanitary report about the setbacks, which is only part of the inspection criteria for the system. And, uh, it's also on a two acre track, so I brought this up to commissioner's court before. If it's on ten acres and larger tracks, the state allows a wa, a waiver for permitting on those, so the court could. I would think do similarly to what the state does. We, we require permits on all tracks regardless of size. And so we, we would be waiving essentially a local requirement if it was on a track that was ten acres or larger. This one is not. That's the reason I bring up the acreage, to remind the court. So it's, uh, for commissioner's court, but I, uh, I would, I would just, you know, caution the court given the fact that we don't have, uh, any permitting, the recentness of the permit, uh, is, uh, the last thing we show this in two thousand. The applicant may have something else to add, but just give us what was given to us.
What's your deal, Bill?
Yeah, I mean, so, like, we really don't know when it was, when it was installed at all. We don't have any sort of history back on that property.
I, I don't have any information, any claim from them on the install date. All I have is what we've done. We've looked for permitting and our records did not locate any. And the appraisal district shows two thousand, um, two thousand and four.
Two thousand and four.
Anybody here from this?
I need somebody online.
You got a line, Andy?
And it's almost all correct, correct?
Yeah, so, um, I'm waiting on the other information we have. If it says two thousand and four, then, um, I would say it this way, so barring them bringing any evidence of being a pre nineteen eighty installation, then I would, um, deny the variance.
Is that a home they live in?
Yeah, that's a picture of it right there.
And have a motion? Moving second on favor, raise your hand.
And that is with the caveat, they don't bring any.
Bring some additional information, I'll bring it back to court.
Okay.
Thirty five, discuss and take action on Steve Gabriel. Request for variance to onsite surface facility regulations regarding permanent application twenty twenty five dash zero one three two.
Must have been something in the air, I've got a few of these. I like it. So, like, yeah, I'm real, this is a different set of facts, uh, so. They're putting a new application for a, for a new system. There's an existing system regarding on the property that we're required by the state to. Systems. Our policy currently allows it if they're permitted or grandfathered, that they can stay in use. They are, uh, they're claiming that it was pre nineteen eighty, you'll see in the backup and their claim is it's pre eighty. We don't show a permit, but again, we wasn't. Our appraisal district date showing two thousand and nine, but that could have been something that got replaced on an even older system, to be honest with you. But that's, that's two thousand and nine day, and this one is on a twenty five acre track. So if the court, uh, one option the court would have is to waive this under the ten acre requirement.
Yeah.
I know, I know Steve has lived back there a long time. I don't know how long. This is, uh, right out there on Rosenwall. So they had some family land, but, so, like I said, it's been a long time, but as far as, I don't know if they've changed the house out or they got all wrapped up, other than that.
Either, two options here is if you're pre eighty, the foreman's, they're just trying to permit. Grandfather, but the second option is if you're not convinced that it's pre eighty, but you want to grant, uh, an exception to it. You could allow it under the fact that it's a ten acre plus track where they existed.
And they're adding another house and putting that system in.
Yeah, the new one will be permitted, it's the existing one that they're seeking to grant.
They've had some, some changes in land. I don't know exactly what's going on. Have you, have you talked to, talked to them about any of that, Andy?
No, I just, I just have the acreage based on what was submitted to us. It's changed, I'm not, I don't have that.
I got a seven here.
Fourteen.
Yeah.
I'll go out on them and, and, uh, approve, uh, variance, twenty twenty five, one, zero, one, three, two.
Based on the size or?
Based on the size of the lot.
Potentially grandfather, I guess it could be both.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Moving second on favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty six, discuss take action on Casey Peterson, Nikki Vasquez's request for variance to onsite surface facility regulations regarding twenty twenty five dash zero one five two.
Morning.
Good, how about you?
Uh, the property we bought, had a house on it previously, it was a two, three bedroomed lot. We moved on another mobile one, and the system we have is put in eighty seven, and it changes the. We have on it, with experience, she had a sanitary, sanitary come out and write a letter on it and her report and put the stamp.
So on this one, uh, it's a.
They're white road.
They're. Eighty five, eighty seven.
Little left one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I, again, my grandfather. You know, this side of the grandfather. As far as, uh, the court's finding, I, I, I don't know what, what, they've not taken the stance, but, um, we can't locate a permit. I will tell the, those, I've told you before, in, in the early eighties, there are cases where we have located permits in places other than our office. Where existed, uh, the record keeping, to say a little more sketchy in the. So I cannot sit here and tell you, you know, for a fact that no permit was ever issued.
Do you have a paper? I don't know if this is for a permit, but I do.
We have.
That goes back, that goes back to eighty seven, eighty five. That's as far back as we can find. So, uh, again, rather than, uh, just saying no permits required. Um, the court might want to make an administrative determination that maybe there was a permit submitted and it's not.
Well, to me, going back into the eighties, we've been a little more lax on that one, or more receptive to talking about that. Especially if you have piecework to show, at least some sort, something happened in eighty seven there, so, um, and I've been by the property and it, it's, I don't see any issues when I was there, so I'm, I'm okay with offering a variance on.
With the consideration that it may have been, uh, an administrative issue.
Yeah, like anything in the mid eighties.
On the, on this paper that she's looking at right here, the deck was built in nineteen seventy nine. The way I'm reading that, uh.
The house is actually, I believe it's an eighty three. But the house, in this picture, is actually not the house that we moved off the property. So I believe that this is an older house in the house that we have.
The point is, if we built the deck in nineteen seventy nine, probably built the deck on something.
Yeah, there's something.
And that's pre nineteen eighty.
Yeah.
You know, we didn't just build a deck out there for nothing.
Your motion, Bill?
My motion is too, yeah.
Termination of grandfather.
Moving second on favor, raise your hand. Case. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thirty seven, discuss take action on right away acquisitions for what county emergency services just came to for Hathaway Road construction project.
Um, so this is all there, uh, Brandon, uh, is looking at. Right away, just from up to the picture.
We didn't get a picture.
Two pages.
You're going to bring it with you.
We've seen it before. They're taking the best way and turning it this way. We got it.
Yeah.
We got it, Andrew.
We don't need to say that. Yeah, we're fine with that. We know what you're.
Okay, so, uh, obviously it's not signed by the SD at this point. And we'll have to have original copies of this, of the two exhibits so that they can be filed with the clerk. The ones we have now are copied. Um, so those are supposed to be come for the surveyor. The idea would be for the, to allow the court to accept them anyway. Once it's been signed and we have the updated exhibits. For this, uh, this new routing of the road.
Okay.
That's going to be.
I'll second that.
Moving, I will state before the court, just so this doesn't become confusing for later generations. The exhibit does show a potential area. They may be seeking abandonment at some point in the future, but that is not part of this action.
Yeah.
I got a motion in second on the favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty eight, discuss and take action on four star real estate group request for variance to section three point. What county subdivision regulations regarding textile tie and permit, twenty twenty two dash zero three seven.
I want to, I'll mention land solution, follow daily, sorry. Sure, y'all getting used to seeing me at this point. So last court, a couple items were tabled. I, I believe actually the wrong item got put on the agenda, but we resolved that one anyway, so I'm not super worried about it. So, quick couple updates. One of them that was on the agenda was the textile item, and y'all have already rejected that one. I will say, we're working, still trying to get something with textile. I've sent multiple things in the last couple of weeks. We'll come back later if we can't get anything worked out with them, but we're trying. One of the items that we had tabled that we were going to rediscuss today had to do with that drainage study. Since it's not on the agenda, I'm just going to hit a high level and give you an update because I think we've resolved it. That was the one we were talking about outfall and, uh, the unmade. That was the one we were talking about outfall and uh the unmade unmitigated portion of the creek. We've figured out a solution to where we could outfall it upstream, still take it into a diversion pipe into a pond. We had a meeting with Andrew at G L S last Wednesday. As I said, high level, didn't seem like there were any concerns. We resubmitted everything for their review. So at this point, we're just going to withdraw that one and I think we've fixed the issue.
So that item would be back once we've had a chance to review.
Okay. If it still doesn't. So then the only one we're talking about today was like Fleximatt and the ditch variants that we talked about.
He's requesting a pass.
Okay.
Pass on thirty eight, thirty nine, discuss and take action on Four Star Real Estate Group Request for Branches Section. B twelve point eight M, B twelve point eight N, and B twelve point nine D and B twelve point ten of the Walker County Subdivision Codes. Go ahead.
All right. So this one was the Fleximatt and swell variance. The first half of the variance was erosion control. We just wanted to be able to use Fleximatt. As an equal to riprap or slope paving for anything less than ten feet per second. With the reason being, it one, it looks better with grass growing between it. Got the the concrete blocks that does have some energy dissipation, performs better than slope paving up to three to one side slopes. Has a higher strength than slope paving and is easier to maintain. Um, last time we were talking about the mud's going to maintain all that anyways. It's not going to be Walker County. All drainage features will go through the pipe. That was the first half of variance. Second half was the one that we kind of got hung up on and wanted to talk to G L S. So I I think the variance looks maybe more daunting than it is. The thing I wanted to point out was Walker County Rules and Regs only describe a roadside ditch. Gives that sort of an outline, but there are other types of ditches. Stream event swells, perimeter swells, rear lot swells, pond back slopes, retaining walls, all of which would have different requirements. So the the four pieces of this swell, we've got side slopes, we've got longitudinal slopes, we've got minimum depth and design year. I think the only thing that we were asking for that to me changes the intent of the rules was the design year and that's really how much flow can go in that swell. But we spoke last Wednesday and we decided we're just going to meet the Walker County spec. We had already asked for, you know, it's uh the design year was ten year storm with six inches of free board. We were recommending doing the one hundred year. We talked with G L S, we're just going to do both. We're hundred years what I care about, that's what I sleep well at night with, so I'm just making sure they achieve both. So that one, I don't think is going to be a concern. The only two swales that aren't going to do that are the swales that we're only installing for erosion control purposes. We're putting some swales behind the retaining walls just to make sure water's not going to settle and erode behind the wall. And then also the pond back slopes. The pond will still function without it. We're just trying to eliminate how much su- uh side slope real erosion happens there. But all of your primary soils are going to achieve that design year.
So so Mason with G L S is online and uh and ready to answer questions for the quarter and add comments, but if you'll. Probably the best graphic that's attached, if you'll scroll up, there's a map that shows the different. Options we got there. This is probably the most helpful of the exhibits. So if you'll look, um. The they have this perimeter ditch here, the um they're all color coded over here. Rear lot swales here, um, I mean, perimeter here, rear lot swales at the back of these lots coming through. Uh, this is, this is what they're calling the temporary swell, the rain swell over here. New sections are proposed here. Their idea is to come back in and redevelop that drainage as they develop those new sections. That's the reason they're referring to it as temporary. Um, retaining wall.
Uh, there's some there. It got.
I think I'll let Mason address this, but in general, there's not a lot of opposition to what they're proposing. Uh, some question about whether it even requires variances because of the way our rules are written. Uh, our our rules are focused on the uh the the ditches that are adjacent and in the right ways. Um, I'll let Mason speak to this, but I think based on our conversations with G L S, the only one that sort of. Comes close to meeting what we what we consider sort of a roadside ditch would be this temporary swell. Um, it's not in the right way. It's out of the right way, but it's functioning sort of to protect that that street there uh from from cross drainage. And so uh the rest of them, um, I don't think necessarily meet the 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 criteria except for where they're in the right way. So that's one of the things that wanted to discuss today is where these. Uh, and they don't all, but where some of these do enter in the right way, that in the right way, that we would attain conformance outside the right way. Outside the right way, be.
Right. And and the reason why we even asked for this is we've got a comment on the plan saying your soils need to match it, match the rules. So we just said, would it be helpful if we went and described all the types of swales and we just put it in?
They went through all of them. This is the main one, I think, that was the the that is our focus is the green one. Um, I'll let Mason talk to that. Mason, are you available?
Yes, he's on.
Yes, sir. I'm here. Uh, this is, yep, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and introduce yourself for the record.
Mason Kwiatowski, uh, civil engineer with G L S. Um, just to add on to what Andy uh spoke about in regards to the exhibit. Um, no, not any necessarily objections to the uh internal. Uh, drainage that elevation is showing. Um, the the one in question that Andy spoke about, the the green. Uh, temporary swell. Um, based on past discussions with elevation. Um, we've talked about that swell not meeting the slope uh per the Walker County subdivision regulations. Uh, at a point five percent minimum per the code, um, they are proposing the. Green to be point two percent longitudinal. Um, I think Walker's team has has. Put together a a revised uh package that that shows side slope uh changes from four to six. Is that correct, Walker?
Correct. From six to one to four to one, as per the geotech.
Four to one, sorry. Um, but I guess m- my my general concern for that section. And I know it's it's called temporary, uh, but. We don't necessarily know how long that could be temporary. Um, and at a point two percent running slope. Uh, you are teetering uh with the point of, you know, so any siltation that builds up into that ditch. Is is going to be an issue as far as as draining. Um, and then, you know, what the effects of that. May be whether it's, you know, backing up onto the road, et cetera. Um, we just don't know what that looks like. And so. We'll wait for for Walker's team and their and their recent middle package. I haven't seen that yet. Uh, but um further internal discussion between between Andy and I is is going to take place and with the elevation team on that.
So for for today's uh court. The idea that these other other ditches that are perimeter, that are interior lot. Um, don't need to conform. Just want to make sure that the the court and and the review team are on the same page on that. With the exception of where they're in the right way. So that lets them move forward and ask for review what they've submitted. They've already submitted. They've already, have you guys turned that in yet? It's been submitted. We're just in the review process on that uh on the revised drainage. Um, also going back to what what was said earlier, I think the proposal is to use the. Uh, alternative uh to the riprap where the uh the. It's above four F P S but below ten.
Right.
On all of those requests.
Anything below four F P S, if you add it, would just be an additional cost to our part.
Right.
But that's usually anything below that will do block sod and staple it just to make sure.
And anything above ten, we'll go back. Design. So um they believe that the product is appropriate for that range of control, but not beyond it. Um, so just as a general consensus, I think the the recommendation from Mason's group is. That before they give final uh um advice to court on this, that they would. They would like to review the plans that were resubmitted and um. And then under the under the uh assumption that the other ditch types don't need to conform except for in the right way.
Okay. So what do we want to grant today?
I'm just. I don't necessarily need to make a grant because I think that, you know, we reviewed. Be reformatted and a lot of this stuff could be cut out of the branch request to make it much more simple.
Yeah, I mean, whatever works for you. Don't just try to follow the rules.
Because whatever's in the right way, we're going to make sure. So as a general. Is are we okay with the ditches that are conforming, that are in in the right way? With the exception of that one roadside ditch, looking at that as a roadside ditch.
Yeah, and we need the 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 temporary one, the green one there. Where we we worry about temporary becoming permanent.
Sure. And if I can talk about that one for a second, so that that green one, and I agree. So this green ditch, first of all, will. Maintain the ten year, six inches and a hundred year. So if I could go point five percent, I would have just done it and not asked for anything. So the only reason why I'm asking for point two percent is because it's like a six foot difference in that depth from this starting point down to this. Start getting depth issues when you go that steep. The point two percent, it's going to drain. Parents are worth. This this is also, we got clay soils out here, which is pretty good. I'm used to working in the moon dust and Splendora where things can wash away. But I mean, I fully believe that the point two percent with a dry application here is kind of flood control establishment. It's going to hold up. Point two will work. It's going to contain both storm events. Even if Four Star were to leave, it's still going to hold up. But then you don't have a eight foot deep swell. You got, you know, three and a half foot deep swell here. So it's just a lot less erosion concerns at the creek tie in.
Yeah, I think the position, uh, our our sort of take on it is not necessarily that that is not a variance that the court shouldn't consider or even approve. But that bringing that back, once we've had a chance to review the entire drainage and the redesign on that section, that was actually. It would give, it would give G L S a better chance to give final comment on that. We may not need to refer to variances on those other road, other other. The exception of. In the right way, under the current plan. Yeah, so you would probably. There's any areas where they're not and we could bring those up as part of it. Uh, am I, I'm not hearing anything. Is it, is that as a general rule, okay to to take that approach to it?
Outside of the right way.
Okay, so the one in the green, it kind of popped in my head, kind of what um Mr. Martinez had said a little while ago was that. When you drew a point two and said, we think it'll work and then less said, you don't think point two works, so. We don't need to be the one up here.
No, no, I get it. I get it. That's why we want chance to review the actual. Currently proposed dis- ditch cross section on that is submitted as part of the current plan set. And then they can come back and and make final comments to court. Our, the reason it's before court is because there is a minimum, there is a. A minimum slope in the standard and 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 if they're not attaining it, doesn't mean they don't have a good reason for not attaining it. That would be part of that that discussion, but I think we could hold experience down, distill it down to a couple of items post plan. Make it much simpler for them to work with in the future as well, uh, when they're trying to work around the variance.
The green swell, I mean, if if that's what we end up having to do, it's fine. It's just. I I don't think it's necessary. If all the other ones had to follow, then we, that's where we would have bigger issues. So that's why we still wanted to come today and get the general thought.
So Mason, I I you don't have any strong objection to conformance on the other ones except for in the right way. Is that correct?
That's correct, Andy.
And I got a motion.
Did you make a motion?
I got a motion. Moving second, all in favor, Brandon. All in favor, raise your hand. It was to deny with to bring back.
We'll be back, right?
Yep, see you soon.
Yeah, we'll go back to thirty one. Let's go take action on twenty twenty five dash five four.
I've come up with a solution while we've been waiting.
I bet it's a good one.
It is. When these engineers, and I'm talking to every all engineers, when they develop a twenty year road, they maintain that road for that twenty years. And then the county can take it.
I like it.
Hey, I'm done.
Yeah, he fixed all of the problems.
You put a stamp on a twenty year stamp, I want it to last one year.
I feel like it's going to be hard to find an engineer.
I bet they'll build me a road though. Okay, that's my solution, but.
I don't think.
I don't think y'all liked it, did you?
Maybe it's not good to work here.
Took me five minutes to come up with it.
So we're going to just walk you through real quick as fast as we can. I know everybody's really excited about this. Uh, so a lot of it, if Ben's. A lot of commas, a lot of periods, a lot of small.
Before you start, I have wondered, I I had somebody request me.
Okay.
And I don't know if we address it here or address. When we do the geotech reports. Right? You have to have the geotech reports in before plat submittal.
It's part of the plat application.
It's part of the plat application page. I'm gonna pick on Four Star because they're sitting here.
Yep.
Where their roads are going to be. Some of those areas, they've got ten foot cut, right? Geotechnical, geotechnical services right there is basically pointless. Because everything you need, you move off and somewhere you're going to fail, right? Okay, I was asked if we could change when we ask for those geotechnical. Instead of doing it at plat submittal, do it when we do plat approval or move it somewhere else further down the line. So that when they go in there and they say, hey, we've got to have the geotech in a in a in a location, ten foot cut, that's going to take. So they got to do it again. They do it again to to get the road design and everything they need. They're requiring it under plat submittal.
So it's it's required for final plat submittal. It's uh, you know, people can submit under your guidance review process that court has set up for review. Prior to the the final, having all their documents together, but before it come come before court for plan and plat approval. The the geotech has to be turned in. That's the way it is in the rules now. And if they use a an early geotech to do design and. Engineer has knowledge of those. They would if they're. There are cases where they need to call for a revision.
Correct, or or also they just had a deeper bore. If you're going to go, if you know you have ten foot of cut, you might do a fifteen foot bore or even a twenty foot bore. That that's an option too. That I see that all the time.
That's what they are doing.
So. I mean, a lot of the times. Before you've done. You don't know what's going where. You just say do deep bores everywhere just so you're covered. And then in the ponds go really deep.
Well, but but like that property right there, you you you've got a pretty good idea where your roads are going to be. It's covered in timber. You haven't cleared it. So now you have to, how how do you get your wood machine out there to it?
That's why we got that variance because we've, they can go clear cut as much as they can through the woods. But since all spacing requirements is so tight, we can't get everything until we clear it all. So we have to clear it first. Um, which makes it hard to get done before that first submittal. Um, so that's what we're trying to work in between, but.
So is there a way that we can clean that up?
Well, as we discussed, when we were discussing that variance, the 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 geotech has to be done before. Final plan and plot approval. There is a way to submit guidance review without them. And get feedback on the plans. So we we can look at that. But we can look at it if there's some 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 way to make that.
Bringing it back anyways.
Yeah.
I get that for four shout.
The only thing I can think of is um talking to the geotech company that you use. The spacing requirements, they are really severe to try to get done in the trees when, you know, doing it every five hundred feet. I mean. When you put that exhibit we had in ours, it's everywhere. And I don't think you need nearly that much to come up with roadway specs. Because every five hundred feet is not drastically changing soil. So maybe you do deeper bore requirements, but less far apart.
I think we need to do over two hundred fifty foot.
Yeah, I'm I'm arguing with you. Yeah, five hundred feet is a pretty good way.
Most agencies five hundred feet is pretty common.
Punctuation grammar.
Definitely say it's a challenge regarding clearing and and that timing.
Punctuation grammar and addition of.
That can kind of skip the punctuation grammar.
Unless somebody wants to talk about commas and periods.
I don't even know where to put them.
So I guess page thirteen, um, we just added a note saying that uh the plans have to be. Sixteen, three, four, six. And it. Three, one, six. Okay, correct. Three, one, six. We just add, we just clarified that that the plants have to be sealed by a professional in care. Um, page fourteen, three point three. Added language, um, essentially updating it, the, um, regarding the groundwater, uh, requirement that, that changed. A half ago, um, and the variance is required, so we just have to add that language. Uh, next page fifteen, three point three nine, um. We again, uh, just clarify the language that instead of running a cost estimate, now legally, we can't ask for a cost estimate, so we're asking for a bid schedule. Um, essentially listed quantities where we can come up with a, where, where the engineer for the county can come up with a, a cost for the project. Um, and clarify what needs to be included in that cost estimate. Page eighteen, three point six four. A little bit of cleanup language here. Uh, there, there's no change in, in what it's saying, it's just clarifying, I'm gonna skip that one. Nineteen, three point seven one. Um, again, we're adding in the list of itemized improvements to, to meet, um, the change that happened about a year and a half ago. Three point seven four, uh, you have deleted based on some language with, um, Andrew and County Clerk. Page nineteen, three point seven four.
Yeah, so, uh, I'm talking to this while we're here. The entire time I've been here, including since this policy was adopted, minor plats, plats that are four or less lots that don't require infrastructure. The court has a, has two orders, one issued in two thousand, one issued in two thousand nineteen, authorizing. Myself or the county engineer to approve minor plats for filing. Uh, this language right here was confusing that, and rightfully so, it is confusing language, because it looks like. That in addition to me approving it, that it also then has to come before court for approval, before Kerry can file it. Sure that everybody's on the same page, if, if my office, either myself or the county engineer, under that order, under this order, that would now. Mirror one another, approve it for filing, that it doesn't come back to Commissioner's Court for approval.
On a minor plat, major plat. Major plat means.
So replats, major plats, those will all have to come before Commissioner's Court, so of course, they would have to be approved by Commissioner's Court, because that's the only. In, in court, because that's the only way you'd approve things, where you delegated that responsibility or assigned that to a designate. Myself or the county engineer, then we can execute, uh, on behalf of the court, those small plats. Without having to come back to Commissioner's Court for filing. Kerry, and I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page on that, so we're clarifying this language, doesn't really. Operate change in the way we've been doing things for, since two thousand when I got here, um, it is just that, um. I want to remove this, because it, it's very confusing, it looks like we're gonna prove it, or reapprove it. Which doesn't save the public any time, it doesn't, the process faster, doesn't accomplish.
Will it state anything in the regulations that the majors have to have Commissioner's Court approval?
The only one that's exempt from that under three point seven four, nothing else is exempt from.
Because that's state statutes and then on what the county clerk has to.
So I might clear that everybody's on the same page. But are we good with this?
Will said yes.
Just so the court's aware, I mean, this is the process we've been, we've been using that original process where we approve it, they file it. Throughout this being in place, it's just when this was noticed, we wanted to make sure it was cleaned up.
What happened was there was a minor plat that was filed on my law.
Yes.
All of us in our brains think my law, we have to have certain stamps. So we started having issues, because it was like, wait a minute, there's no Commissioner Court stamp on this, I can't approve it. It was a minor plat, yes, the majority of minor flats are filed on legal paperwork. In the deed records, not on the my law. The concern of our offices is we've already bought now four more plaque cabinets. If these plaits start coming in as minors on my laws, we're gonna run out of space a whole lot faster than I had projected. And so Andy and I started conversations about, he has it open to where they can file on a minor or a major. Well, it's not really in statute that way, but that's what we call it, um. Big thing was, was it was on my part and didn't have a Commissioner Court stamp on it.
So in the old, in the old regulations, minor plats were always filed on eight and a half by fourteen. Then there was a change made by the court to, to require those to be filed on full sections. That lasted for about a year. Then the court came back and said, pick, you can do it either way. The vast majority of people picked eight and a half by fourteen.
We're all good with this one.
We're, we're good with this.
Alright, we good.
Want to make sure that horse was thoroughly.
Next one, we got it, four point one.
Okay, uh, page twenty, yes, four point one, um, a lot of these changes have to do with things that we've seen in review that we're trying to clarify. Um, so. Plats have to have a title block, so that language has been added, that the plats have to have a title block with the name of the subdivision, lot, block, reserve numbers. On, on the plat, um, city D maps don't have to be to scale, so four point four, that we clarified that. Four point nine, um. Also requiring that every, that all plats, multiple sheets have sheet numbers and the plat name, subdivision name on each sheet, that's been added.
There are things that were, were very common and we assumed would be done and then we got.
One eight, page twenty one, um. So we just referenced section five regarding, uh, the, some notes we added, so I'll cover that later. Um, four point two seven, we added that the locations of easement slots or, uh, reserves necessary. For cluster boxes, um, have to be shown on the plat, so not every, the information. If, if you don't have a reserve and easement, something like that required for a cluster box, you don't have to show. We're just trying to clarify that. Page twenty three. Four point four nine, um. We added a note, we added some water supply notes, so I'll go over those later in appendix C. Four point five, um, just noted that, uh, we, we referenced the surveyor certification, um.
I'm in a way.
He wants to sign, basically say it's all these and stipulates the whole track, but we, I can't sign that. I talked to Eddie McGowan, but he agrees, all, all I'm interested in is that you put at the end, it says. Cause you're requiring the title report, we don't mind signing saying it's all the easements as it relates to that title report, but. Okay, I mean, there's always buried easements and stuff that you don't know about, so that's all.
Uh, we have no objection to that.
Alright, so you gonna get.
Next page twenty four, four point five five, um. Added a note that said, essentially any deed restrictions are not going to be listed on the plat, so we added a note referencing that.
And a lot of them, of course, they relate to a variance.
So I have it in front of me, but I understood it as we're not showing variances on the plat, is that not what it says?
No, four point five five? Yeah, no. Would be related to a plant, to a plant subdivision regulation.
So specifically restrictions that are not related.
Mike, well, you may not be worth it, we had some strange notes being placed on plat that had nothing to do with the planning process. It's like you were the one doing that, but.
No, he wasn't. Uh, page twenty five, five point five. Well, let me, let me back up to five point four, we just added that the Commissioner's Court may grant, um, an extension. Just to clarify that it's not a show, it's a may. Uh, five point five, um, added a note regarding, we discussed this last time, regarding consolidated lots on. In existing subdivisions, that if you consolidate a lot, it doesn't have to meet the minimum frontage requirement.
It's only for consolidated lots, not if they're breaking lots.
Right, only, only consolidate, um, and five point six was also added, um. Related to if there's, or this, this, this relates to, um, kind of direction given from the court previously, that if, um. If it's in an existing subdivision, um, a, a variance is required to, uh. On, um. If, if you're subdivision, if, if you, if you have a, that you put right away in existing subdivision, as, as long as no additional. Right away dedications required for the commissioner, then. There's no variance required.
As the procedure that we would go to the commissioner, and then the commissioner does the additional right away, and then it would.
Yeah, so you wanted to come back to court every time. That's a good one.
Page thirty. When we were here four weeks ago, I'm Commissioner Doggett, we added a section, um. So it was previously said that you needed a direct variance, we added a section references, um, related to that variance.
Yeah, your comment was, it was the right range to what, so we.
And now get into the engineering section of page thirty nine. First item is that we just, we want plans to be legible without magnification, so just because you can zoom in on a PDF, PDF, doesn't mean that. A printed version is legible, we clarified that, um, B one point two. Um, we added that the engineers are responsible for also the calculations and, um. Everything shall be done in accordance with the, you know, state board regulations for, for engineers and surveyors. And, um, noted that everything needs to be sealed dated, um, and signed by the responsible professional engineer. Uh, item F, we added, uh, so we added a timeline related to, um, inspections. So we, we noted seventy two hour notification is required as a, as a plan note, that way the contractor's aware of it on the plans. Um, it has been previously in our examination form that we'll talk about next, but, um, we added to the regulations. Um, B one point five, we noted that drainage area maps also have, um. Need to hit the minimum scale of one to two hundred, we don't want drainage area map that would increase. Page forty one, B one point three. Um, this, this is related to plan revisions and that the plan revisions need to be, uh, clearly dated with that revision date, and the, the changes need to be clouded. So that if somebody comes back with asphalt plans, they need to clearly show what's changed in those asphalt. Um, B one point, E two point one, um, we added knuckle, so I think knuckle was applied. Um, we moved that to the minimum frontage, but we, we clarified that it applies to full. Uh, we updated, so throughout, we updated to twenty twenty four standards. Did that previously, um, we also added again a reference to section five, which is regarding, um, replats and mini plots. So just to note that there's specific, that there's exceptions there that are not, don't relate to plats. Uh, page forty six, um, the way you increased, you're, you're gonna need to increase your design standards, um. Previously, the, the posted speed limit was equal to the design standard, typically you design for a speed limit that's greater than your posted limit. So we, we have an increase, everything increased by five miles per hour.
Why would do that?
So that's, so typically your posted speed is set at the, set at the eighty five percentile. Of the, the speed that's driven on the roadway, but you might want to design for something. Might want to design for something that is greater than that, because you will have vehicles traveling at a greater speed.
So you have to design for the higher speed, so that your safety considerations are for a slightly higher speed than what is posted.
So we need new subdivisions would have to be posted at a higher.
You don't have to post them higher, we're just.
Post them at the origin.
So we're safer when they're running sixty instead of thirty, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if you did, it would only be on the.
Actually, so there's, there's a, uh, later in the code, we're accidentally updated, um, something to increase the speed limit, that was unintentional. So I'll, I'll cover that in a minute, but I'm actually proposing that we remove that change from the rest, only changing the design speed.
Pushing the speed limit back down.
That's pretty scary.
Um. And these are. So next change is, um, page forty seven, we added details regarding coal size and knuckles, um. Pretty, pretty typical radius, um, of what you would see, but we, we see a lot of varying radius, so we just want to give a standard, that way. It's something that e- everyone's doing it the same, um. And we, yeah, so this would apply both to concrete and asphalt standards, so twenty five foot radius. On the pavement around your, where your driveway is connected to your coal sector, all of a twenty five foot radius. Page forty eight. Updated to, um. To be twenty twenty six, not twenty twenty four on item Q, and also clarified that local roads shall have a three hundred foot. Um, centerline radius, but, um, local roads or collector roads or our trail roads. Local roads that don't meet that three hundred foot centerline radius, or our trail roads, collector roads, they need to be designed in court, and of course, with the text dot roadway sign. So it gives an option to not have to bring variance back to court every time. Page fifty one, again, we updated six dot twenty twenty four, um. We have a note that the testing laboratories, along with the subdivision regulations. And, um, we also added a note, which we'll talk about next, is that the construction oversight. Shall comply with the current approved construction examination guidelines. That's that, two page. Um, that's, I just added twenty twenty four there, the next one's due twenty twenty four. Regarding, um, asphalt pavement, we noted, um. Often we're seeing people slide, so just shy, um, on, on asphalt, and so we're just trying to clarify that. That the requirement is an absolute minimum. One point nine is not the expectation. Uh, page fifty five, this is, um, I referenced this earlier, that we're, that I'm recommending you increase your, um. Strength of your concrete from thirty five PSI to four thousand PSI, thirty five hundred PSI to four thousand PSI, um. More and more entities are going to that four thousand, and, and most of the, um. Paints metals that we see, they're, they are four thousand, are capable of four thousand. We've also adjusted the, um, rear spacing to, um. To align with pavement thickness.
You increased it from thirty, hold on, go back there.
So.
You increased it from thirty inches to thirty six inches, is that the way I read that, and eighteen to twenty four? The spacing's bigger.
We made the spacings bigger, but the, the, um, the bar size, we increased from a number four bar to a number five bar.
And up to pounds per.
Quarter, okay, that's where I missed it, we, we increased the size of the.
Increase the size of the rear bar, yes, for, for your larger pavement.
On B, but you didn't increase the size of A.
Right, on A, we did not, so thirty two foot and, and narrower, that remain the same, um, except for the, the four thousand PSI. It's your pavement's larger than, so your collector roads and your arterial roads.
Sorry, I missed that, this is three bar quarter there.
You also did not increase the spacing. Just the only thing you changed with A was.
That's it, correct, A remains the same. It, okay, yes, thank you, so fifty seven, this was actually inadvertently changed, um, the eleven point three. I'd, I'd like to leave this at thirty, so this is posted speed limit, and I'd like to leave this at thirty and thirty five, so.
Strike this.
Strike this change.
This is what we're talking about.
Yes. Page fifty eight. Um. We noted that um so, so generally drainage should be taken directly to inlet. Um, that's not true with extreme events. So extreme event. Probably, so our requirements are that your inlet has to take a five year storm greater than the five year storm or your, and your storm sewer has to be sized by gravity for the five year storm. There is a point when you will have ponding in a roadway and your roadway will become a conveyance. So we're just clarifying that in an extreme event, the roadways can become a conveyance. Uh, but your standard five year drain design can flow by gravity within the storm sewer. Um.
Wake up here.
Oh, wait. Sorry. Um, let's see. We clarified that detention basins are maintained not by the county. And so they're by, by a private entity, the owner, uh, via mud. Uh, the mud can be, but it, the, just additional language, say county is not mainly detention basin, maintaining. B twelve point eight. Um. We just reworded this to clarify that um the ponds are designed and constructed. Um, and then they are later maintained by the, the um property owner, the doesn't need a property owner. I think you could have read that which two ways. Um, fifty nine. Just noting that um have to have a dedicated right of way or dedicated easement um for your extreme events. And then I, for I, um, we clarified how to design a pilot channel. So so this is kind of a minimum standard of you at least have to have point two percent uh with your concrete pilot channel in your detention basin or point five percent for your concrete, for your grassy pilot channel. Just to help, detention ponds typically don't, are not maintained well if they don't drain well. Um, and, and it kind of compa, it's a compounding issue. So this, this helps give um the detention basins a little more chance to be maintained. Page sixty. Um, we added the language regarding text dot railway design manual, just to clarify and how to sign guardrails and that also um item J is um related to uh getting NBI number and uh and um making sure that it can, we can turn this over to text dot to do the, the two year inspection on the brackets.
We define NBI numbers. I know that, but we should say it.
Now, instead of just putting it.
Say it the first time and then.
Yeah.
Page sixty one. Um. So ju- just noting that clarify that roadside, it just can't have can't have breaks in them and berms in them. So you don't have to have a continuous eighteen inch deep ditch. You, you can have a high point in your ditch that's less than eighteen inches. Or if you're tying into existing, or we ran into this in Hawthorne, where if you're tying into this roadway that doesn't have a twelve inch deep ditch, which you don't, you, you don't have to have a twelve inch deep ditch at the same time, you can.
Right. And, and, and the way I read that, at the top of the hill.
Right.
Where there's no need for a ditch, we don't need an eighteen inch ditch. Or somebody having to come to ask for variance. Right, this is where we're at now.
We don't want variances for that.
Okay.
Um, item I, again, uh, just referencing text up for standards. Uh, change on that same page bottom, yes, just again referencing text dot standards. The next page, updating to align with uh text dot current standards, text dot does now have a standard. They used to have a special specification for um like plastic pipe. Now they actually have, they have an adopted standard with a twenty four, twenty twenty four regulations. And so those are, we just updated to align with those. Um, page sixty three, um. Just clarifying that um there should be, you know, ponding in the street in the five years tomorrow. It previously says curve, so. We don't even want it, we don't want it above the, the gutter line. We want to all bite for the riders tomorrow. Page sixty four, uh, just added in the certification form that's required. It's, it's currently a requirement that we're just clearing it in the regulations. Certification form has to come back from the engineer upon completion. So the next item is uh sunny park certification. Um, and that's also sixty seven.
Yeah, the reason that we have two now is going back to the ones that are going to be filed in the eight and a half by. Those are because they've been filed in deed records. The certification included the record set. So we, we needed one for each record set. So the top one that goes by record, the bottom goes. So we could technically, right now, the way your policy is written, you could have a large format plot. It's really rare that we have these, since we're allowed it, but you can have a large format plot that, that is being filed uh in the, in the plot record that is the minor plot. So that's why we just differentiate it by format size. But the only for, the only, the only eight and a half by fourteens will be minor, no majors were filed.
Right.
Page seventy. Um. Added enough, the drainage management shall be cut clear of fences, buildings, plantings and other obstructions. Um. Oh, and then um on page uh for, for C twelve, we added the two water supply notes. Um, whether it's an individual well or um from like a public water supply. So either option there to note that on the flat. And then the, we added the um certification of the surveyor, which we will um, we can make the pot of base.
On the individual water well note. There's something there that says that's based on whatever study you come up with that number from. I don't know whether this or not, but.
Reference the groundwater.
Then just say, hey, you need to have a four hundred. Should we reference the blue body waters?
Yeah, I'm saying we should reference whatever study is.
Well, yeah, so hopefully uh a lot of features helping to solve this issue right now. But right now we run the gamut. We've had everything from an owner come in and say credible evidence is the fact that I have a well that works and I'm adding only one well to a sanitarian who did a report for us on the depth based on what wells were drilled around the area to geoscientist reports that were out through bluebonnets or a short format that, so it's been all over the place. Um. Usually as part of anything where the court is allowing credible evidence, there's a depth that's proposed, that depth uh out there for whoever buys that subdivision to see it, right?
Yeah, and, and we put that on the, we, we made that a requirement somewhere to put that on the plat, right?
We generally each time a variance, e- each time you guys allow for credible evidence for that to be put on. So this just sort of formalizes uh the note.
So we can add after the word lot, we can add per the groundwater study by blank dated blank.
Well, unless you don't have a.
Well, they're gonna stop at the first available water wherever it's at anyway, so.
Unless bluebonnet's only one in one for county or is there?
That's.
Their district. And that's, it covers the whole county.
I guess it does, cause they.
Yeah. It covers thirty four, five hours.
Yes.
It's us, grounds, Montgomery.
I think the warning on that one, on, on that C twelve, I think I would always rather reference some sort of your state reg, you know, with the water well being served by onsite water work. Recommended water well plan shall be in compliance with state regulations or whatever, something referencing, cause the state references us, but they also reference TCEQ to come up with what is develop what is a credible evidence of water. So um, there's and there's waivers too, and there's all kinds of stuff. So that one needs to be a little more generic.
Okay, so how about this, just for today's purposes, cause I don't want to rub my ass on this. Let's just put this certification to the side for today.
Yeah.
Bring it back on.
And then we'll come back and redress it. It looks like we're gonna be coming back anyway. In the meantime, if somebody's at proposing credible evidence, the court can just make it part of their order, except for the evidence that there's a note. Yeah, I mean, it'll be different. Okay, something pops in.
Yeah, we're coming back unless I go, oh, concrete today. I was looking in the other side over there, we make it easy.
We're almost done.
We'll just end that individual side role, let's add each lot we serve up front of one, one work period.
I didn't know.
I didn't say no.
I'm getting older here.
That'd be worth the most, you know?
Maybe hurts.
Don't go in too hard.
See it. See it over here.
Page seventy five. So we have a speaker in here, so we can page and page and form, and we um added the developer certification form that's, or form, a form that's always been required by the company, but just to clarify, it's part of this package.
What am I doing here?
Page off line. Seventy six, we've added um a template for the applicants. Right, right now that applicants, we see all different versions of applicants. So we just add the language that they can use. Oh. Then.
Works for me.
So page three is the first uh new detail where we've added a concrete pavement section. So I guess we, in the middle, add a concrete pavement section um for ditch standard.
We can do away with the other pages then. Getting their attention now, huh?
Well, even, you know, and this is what we're gonna come back and talk about. We need to add this in here to have a standard to go by. If we, if we, uh, right now, somebody would have to ask for a variance, like to even build it, right? If you guys don't want to keep it that way, then today's proposal is not a- as it's, as it's drafted, is not to replace one standard or another, but to add a standard by, by creepage.
That's the first step. We can replace next week.
And next week's good.
Two weeks.
The other change that we changed in these details are, is that we, on detail, they're, they shall be designed by a geotechnical engineer um to turn, to determine what is sufficient for the, the street construction. So these are the minimum standards. These are not the standard.
That's what I think, it still, it kind of goes back to translation. We need to figure out something. Say we do our, I know we have to have minimums. But then somebody comes in and brings it at minimum and it lasts three hundred and sixty eight days. And it's, then they're gone. And they're like we have no.
We left that stamp on it.
We have no reports.
Because you heard Don say it earlier.
Yes, that's, that's the problem. We, I know we have to have these. But it goes exactly what you said, Oriana. You know, why tell the guy twenty years if he has no touch on it?
No.
Eighteen months after it's over with, he's like, gotta go. It's on you. See you. It's either a twenty year road or it's a, or it's a twenty five.
Or, or it's a eighteen month road, what warranty is or whatever.
Yeah. That's interesting conversation. So now we do.
Goes back to engineers and your architects. That's in any line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Goes back to you got a.
But I gotta call the insurance guy on them though, cause that's what Don told me to do.
He, he'll be picking on me next court.
We're listening, definitely.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, page eighty four.
Sorry, Stan.
The, the only change in the schedule, we added the notes at the top on this detail. Um, again, referencing the geotag that had walls for text dot and um just in general, your cost so it needs to be between um one and three percent. That way we're not having to see variances if you're not right at that two percent. Kind of typical.
So the issue guys were discussing earlier about the design of the whole year. Again, we have a one year, we require a one year maintenance on ten percent. Originally, to remember way back, when the, the current policy in its original form was. Move that from one to two. But then it got, the court decided to move it back to one. That, that's always in play. If you guys want to elongate that. Let's, let's watch it.
Amazing how things come back around.
The one year in policy, you don't can always extend that if you guys want to.
Those trucks coming in there makes it ten, ten years.
Suggesting a number, I'm just saying that.
I'm jumping up. I want that engineer stamp to hold true for twenty years. Put it on you guys. I'll build me twenty year rooms. I know you can do it.
Are we on eighty six, Stephen?
The developers, I think, might like it, but.
Added an open ditch um option with concrete roadway. Um, and then the notes at the top were added also same notes we just mentioned. Page eighty six, same thing. And page eighty seven. Again, same thing, added the, the road open just like. Out of the notes that are at the top.
They will need that one too, which.
And then page eighty eight, um added, again, another uh open ditch concrete section for um for, for low volume roads that. There's also something to discuss is getting a low volume curb and gutter option uh for rural roadways. But we have one right now that um that, that is curbing gutter on a rural section. So we could add that at a later date, just to.
This is not for y'all, this is the court, but the people we got moving in, they don't need open ditch. They need curbing gutter and underground drainage, so it can be pretty far. That's the type of people we got moving in Walker County. You know, there's city folks moving to the country, but they don't want to be in the country. No comment from nobody or what?
I agree.
I got embarrassed, people not waving at me on the county road.
They don't wave at me anyway, so I really don't care what they think.
Uh, page ninety, ninety one is the, the next updated detail. And, and just to, this applies to all the details. They're, they're dated April twenty twenty five. I would have to. Page twenty five.
There's your curves.
I want to point out, you guys are probably all.
They even need under.
Our asphalt standard is kind of pavement width plus the, the base shoulder. The concrete standard that's being proposed. The concrete is based on the asphalt width, not the extent the shoulder. By seeing that, I just wanted to.
Straight down.
So this detail, I think the one, uh, is the, this four thousand PSI three, uh, updated based on the.
What about that? It's concrete to ditch lines too. Roads always ditch.
So you ain't gonna mow.
You don't have to mow.
You better catch that water somewhere.
Be able to infiltrate it and ground.
Yeah, we're gonna send it somewhere fast. City's doing it to us.
And tacos. Page ninety three. Next um page, so this one's been updated to a certain point because I noted that we have like concrete that the um change in uh to mask the rebar and everything like that.
Just wondering why they were up here.
Storm sewer, so page not sick, only update there. Because all the details are a baby debate, I want to update the date on that one. Um, so again, they'll all be dated May twenty twenty four, if, or twenty twenty five. Excuse me, if uh, if adopted today. Next change, uh, page one hundred. So this is your HDPE, this, this applies to the, the, the one. Um, the thing that's updated per manufacturer's recommendations. Um, so that they've got, they've had updated details since we previously uh previously issued, originally issued the revised, the, the June twenty twenty two regulations. And, and there is a note here because, because of even text up recommends or requires the engineer to actually design the, the um subgrade for HDPE. So that's quickly called out on this detail. And page one oh two, we've added a detail um based on the. For uh parallel pipes. So we, we've seen a lot of parallel pipes, especially um like probably for lean. HDPE, so this again is in um.
So you clarified the distances in between them. So you clarified the distances in between them?
Right, yes, so it's actually in the code that's easier to reference instead of looking up.
So.
The manufacturers, right, recommendation. So that wraps up the changes.
That's it.
Tried to try to go a little quicker, but.
Couple of notations.
Yeah, you got a couple of things in there.
Move to approve item thirty one as presented with.
Wisconsin.
rotations excluding Ronnie's nonsense over.
Yeah, we hope that nonsense is complete.
Yeah, I'll pay raise your hand.
Reluctant.
Thirty two, discuss and take action on approval of construction examination guidelines.
We just want just to be before board. Reference in the policy. This is a examination guidelines. All of them here responsible. County obviously sent out. For the schedule. They hand out. That we go over with the. With them at the pre construction meeting. See this, make sure that.
And I appreciate you just working. Yeah, thank you. I saw you in for like six weeks.
Yeah, this is action, man.
Yeah, this is our.
So do you need approval for that form?
Yes, I thought we had that form in place. We do have a.
My motion is to approve them. Move second, I'll pay raise your hand. Motion for. All right, no more. Public comment that Mr. Casey left. Mr. Casey outside. All right.
You got somebody coming?
We know about this. Yeah. You about this HR training coming up next?
HR training.
We got a lunch and learn today. Y'all ain't gonna have tacos with us?
I don't know, no. I'm not, I'm not very HR.
We just had executive session on day two.
I'm like HR work night, man.
You need this?
Yeah, let me.
All right, Mr. Casey, thanks for waiting.
I prepared a statement so to stay on task. I'm here to apologize to commission's court for not completing Raven Park that I started. Project from my heart and my funds. I fell behind due to a stroke and a brain bleed on January. I was taken to Huntsville Memorial Hospital and life flighted to Clear Lake Regional. Three and a half weeks. As you can see, I'm still struggling in physical tasks such as walking without help. Prior to that, my life partner nineteen years had major spinal surgery. And I cared her. Cared for her a little over four weeks in December. Let over. She was restricted from driving, you could not, not allowed to get out of bed. My knowledge, I have never received a call from Walker County Commissioners Court that they were upset with me. Resolve this monitor matter, I want to pick up my artwork and I will use it elsewhere. I am totally opposed to someone else trying to finish the project and have my name associated with it. Respectfully. Jack Casey also owns Cactus Jack.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Questions from media. Mission is cool.
Crash pass was a success for us this year, we had people from all over the county, we ended up with three hundred and sixty six. Uh, people bringing stuff in, twenty one dumpsters. As cool as we can get them, one van. Eighteen with a van full of tires. Appreciate that from adult probation. And some others that I was watching.
Yeah. We do have a HR training after this, and nice.